Labor, if you use kind of the same dollar amount as what we had.
Yeah, two twenty-five. Square foot.
Oh, I thought we did. She's asking, did you use the same hourly rate? I mean.
No, she didn't.
Yeah, yeah, that was just.
That one, kind of on the clock, off the clock.
That was just for the carpet overlay. This is a lot more than.
This is.
Right.
Oh, this is unfair.
And there's a lot of them.
Yeah, right.
So there's some materials. The question is, we would look at some materials, we would like to actually.
Well, I mean, I guess we need to look at what fund we think it's coming out and what the budget is left. My only, if I got to have an opinion on timing, it would be convenient timing for us to be able to do a lot of it over the holiday period. We don't schedule a lot of work during that timeframe. And so as long as Debbie was able to have the materials at the time. I would really appreciate your questions.
That's a good question. That's a good one. And then just how, how are you guys retiring without taking time to work to do this?
I, I think it would be manageable doing it in one office at a time. So you wouldn't have to take the whole sum of it. And obviously, there will be some recording to that. It was just slower. So we can take it from one office at a time.
There's all the wall work, it'll be done in the floor.
In, in a perfect world, yes, I'd like that. All the painting and all of that stuff done. We'll start any time before. Right? You, you can tear it out, tear it out. You can leave all that in place. Get the wall and paint. Get that all done and then start.
Well, we have a ton of that.
How long for the?
Are you guys doing walls?
Yeah.
Yeah. And I think that in Judge Wine's office, he's rarely in there. I think that would be easy to get to. Now, the girls' office, it's different. I have not requested paint. It's only Judge Wine and Judge. And Judge Mears didn't have.
Well, here's, this is the courthouse side. Are you looking at the courthouse side or are you looking at the Capitol outlet?
For you.
Well, the courthouse side doesn't have anything. Yeah.
That's. That's.
So they're just, is the Capitol outlet at the office?
No.
Can you see that? Oh, she's looking at that. My next thing was, I was not sure if we all could finalize the budget yet and if we. Okay, so I have this that has to be signed for the judicial branch. So I'm not sure what you approved my budget at, if it was the same that I requested, but I'll leave this with you all. And then. If you didn't approve my budget for the amount that I requested, you can just change the amount. To what you did.
When do you think this starts?
Just as soon as possible, but it doesn't have to be right now.
Where that, that's something.
That's. Yeah, yeah, I just remembered. I will not see in for the. So if you guys have anything for me, just let me know. But yeah, come up that time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Right, Linda cried about the lights on the courthouse.
Oh, wow.
I'm sorry?
What did you say?
Linda cried about the lights on the courthouse.
That's who you are.
Yeah.
Yeah, Linda probably basically was kind of unlessing the town. And we didn't have a budget being big for courthouse, but we do have the lights. That can be paid for by a donor. And so we'll, I'll be approached to see if we're interested in how we'd install them. For the charge and whether the lights be provided. There were lots of power. It would be on your end. But. We, we don't, well, we didn't allow that process to go, but we'll see if it's coming next year. It's going to take time, but we can also do the front. We have enough to do the top front and then also wrap the. Light poles out. On the main, I think it's all permanent setup, like permanent fixtures as far as mounting. So like six, seven nights a year, we can do it in a manner of freight or something because it'll have to come on. They'd be on the, like in front of the cabinet, something like that. I do, I mean. I definitely, I don't live with a table on top of the building, but I've been basing quite a few different types of installs on all our buildings. So I think. People can still, I can do. So we'll just stand and see if you would do that or. There's any interest in.
Is this the white lights just out on?
Uh huh, yeah. We have a question. So. Should look good. I mean, you kind of tie everything together. Let's see, you've got to test and everyone like the bully ends up. There.
You can just, yeah, motion or just put it in the minutes as approved by consensus.
Jerry prefer. I don't know about this. I make a motion to accept. We get from. Problem. For the lights that we've drawn for us. Send it. All those are. That's all for this time.
Who would I contact to get that whole, like, kind of? Get access.
Um, Jeff, Jeff or man, somebody which I.
Okay. Thank you.
The last guy they brought over, they dropped it from there.
Okay.
He may still be up.
This guy, I shouldn't have known. I can be up.
Brandon, you got more people coming in? We have a great visual. We have to count soon.
Um, let's see. One, two, those ten, but I can see.
We have contact information for that. That is. The one Friday.
She loves all this stuff.
Got it. I made it happen.
Yeah, I have a.
I've got two discussions. I can start with a second discussion first.
I wonder if someone did that.
Yeah.
I'm kind of pushing my.
There's another one else on there, so.
So, Ron, it's something, it's on the agenda. I can't push it forward, but. It's your work. I'm not good at somebody's action board. You got anything to do?
Sure.
Inside trouble?
I really haven't kind of that stormwater permission thing that came. And I didn't know you all my classes is organized. I'm going to one of the. You should learn to look at. Okay.
So. That's for the jail project, right?
Yeah.
And it's just for, it's just for our information that this is the plan that's been.
Right.
But it's just for our information.
Yeah, it'll have, if we look at it.
Then I have multiple checks that need to be canceled because the, when we did the issue, it's for the health department. To do that, they did that survey and they gave away, there were multiple places that wouldn't take the county's check and provide the certificates. So we just need to cancel these checks. I don't know why they wouldn't take it. I, I don't know. Was that for the law? No, that was for the health survey, the online survey took. About twelve months.
Oh, yeah.
It's available. Yeah, I just said. They wouldn't take the checks and provide certificates. Whatever's in the, have certificates. Come home to me and take checks and come home to me and mark.
So I would make a motion, we wait check numbers. Oh, minus six, two, seven, one, oh, five, six, two, seven, two, oh, four, six, three, six, oh, four, minus two, five, four, oh, five, six, two, three. Second. Hi. I call the same side.
And then. I think they'll discuss the groundbreaking day when we're here with the public. Building permissions and all of that to the side.
We do a lot of this, we have a lot.
Um, here's a change for.
We're switching the part.
She's, she's from full time to special.
Okay.
Oh, you're not going to make a motion?
I'm going to motion, we're, we're motioning long drive. Uh, general transition for work coming on.
Second.
Always.
Hi.
I, I'll push that job.
That's all I have right now.
Washington, I heard this. So do you hear my question? This is to talk to. So good suggestion.
It was on here. Yeah, I mean, there's no public hearing, right?
Well, I'll go ahead and all converge things. I have, those who don't remember, I think I've spoken to you individually. And this is happened, you said, commission, make a proposal. I've got the executive director of this soy transportation coalition that's going to be coming in for all the zoom. Also, our director of field services, Dennis Scoopby, from the Kansas soy commission, he'll be here shortly. But I can kind of give you an idea of what. We want to. Talk to you about. Right, I'm listening to something. Yeah. So. Discussion's too full. And. I'm just telling you a little bit about myself. I'm a farmer from Melford, Kansas. I'm also on the Kansas soy bean commission on the treasury board. Also, I'm on the Melford township board. And so being on township board, David goes, he's here representing all of that township. And the. I'll just, I guess what I'll do, I'll start backwards. And we'll talk about the soybean transportation coalition a little bit. In depth and that proposal. But I'll go ahead and start off with. Bridges and soybean transportation and railroad crosses. So the transportation coalition, they've got funding out there for. New initiatives using new processes and some of the processes that they talk about, and we've already done here in county. There are two bridges that are within two miles of me that we've already done. And as far as putting piles in the middle. A bridge that supports the nose. So that's something that was done probably five years ago and they worked good. But when I, when I started hearing about this, when we talked about our soybean commission meeting, I thought, man, this might be something that would work for Osage County. Because one, we had a bridge that was destroyed a few years ago. I don't remember the old bridge. And I'm sure there's been some discussion about it. And so kind of a light bulb went on my mind. I think this might be something that we get the ball rolling. One, use the funds from the Kansas soy bean commission and two, get us a bridge back in place. And so. That's where this all kind of got started. So we'll talk a little bit more about the transportation coalition here shortly. So that's kind of leading into what I'm going to talk about now. Is. Railroad crossing and see Dennis Newbee, he's with the. Our field services director, kind of. Dennis, so. So we'll start talking about, you know, looking at the. Things as far as. Crossings and what we can do. The whole accomplished or. One of them. So. What I'd like, since if you look at reference one on the first page, that's where this old bridge is at. That was broken down. And that's the main thoroughfare between 325th from, you know, we can see it goes south of Melford, tall about Houston. And it's been destroyed. So now there's a couple of different ways to get there. Transport machinery for me is difficult. If you go to reference two, that's the crossing that we currently have to go across. And myself, my son-in-law, neighbors, several of the neighbors have about been hit by that train. Because if you look, if you're going to the west of 317th, like right down here, you have to do a one eighty to get back around and even you'll see if.
Right.
These two lines are transcontinental lines from Chicago to LA. And there's a train going by there every fifteen minutes, if not more often. And so it's dangerous. You guys probably doubt, probably know that there was a fatality a couple of miles west of there. You know, six months ago. A friend of mine, John Harsh, he's got a little bit different circumstances, but you know. If we don't do something here, there's going to be another fatality. And I don't, I don't want another fatality. So that's why I'm here talking to you today. And so what my proposal is. One, first would be to get the bridge put back in place, which we're going to go get with Mike Stonehook. See if there's any possibilities there. But we know that anytime you start building bridges, you're looking. Years out there, five years, maybe ten years. The proposal that I would. If you want to go to the second page. Is to eliminate this crossing. If you look at reference two, is to eliminate crossings. On reference two and build a road to the south of that train tracks. And use reference three, which is a gated signal, gated and lighted signal to, so we can transport, go back and forth across the railway. And so that's where I start getting some of my neighbors involved. I've talked with the landowners on the south, which is Denny Creek. He's on board. I talked with Clint Tyson, who is the landowner on the north. He's on board. And I know you all know Clint. When I was business with Clint, he says, well, you need to visit with Rod Burquist because I already doing some of this.
We just did, yeah, but just trying to agree on.
Yeah, in Markley County.
Because the. Township is doing the work.
Exactly. And so that's when I would have talked to Burlington Northers, Santa Fe. I've talked to Jeremy Winger, who's the contact there. I've talked with KDOT, who is Big Southers. They are on board. Burlington Northern and Santa, Burlington Northern, Santa Fe. And KDOT have both indicated they will give up to a hundred thousand dollars for, you know, anytime you close a crossing and you want to do something of this nature or put the road in. So that's, that's when I would talk with township board, all of that township board, which David's the chair of it. And David had some good questions, you know, one, I'm okay, if we do this, there are some acquisitions, some land, who's going to take care of that acquisition? Is it going to be the county commissioners that will do this? Or is it something that the township will do? You know, a few questions that we need to get answered. We'll need to come to agreement on a price of the land, which, you know, I'm not thinking it's going to be much more than two to three acres. Talking with Jeremy Winger of Burlington Northern, he says, oh, it would be a seventy feet away from the rail. And you could construct a road to the county standards, township standards. And so that's another question that was in place.
Think the way they're, some of my current. They're building a road. The township is not building a road. At Berkeley, is that correct?
From, when I talked to Rod, they have gone after biz. And I think he mentioned the queue, the contract, I don't know.
Lot of, lot of.
They did their, they, they set the whole thing up and they're doing a boot township. It's a township road. So they, they took their balance out on the road.
Okay.
They did a smaller line and all that.
Right. So as far as county standards, we could probably work with the county as far as establishing the break, the pitches and everything. So. And there's going to have to be a fence put back and some brush cut out as you can see. So.
And usually that, usually you work that into the way of that acquisition.
Okay.
You'll work, that's how we do all our bridges, is work that price into it. You kind of figure it in per foot, per running foot.
Right.
Devin kind of sets that up and you figure out how much fence is going to be removed. And then you run off that guideline. You add that to the price per acre. That's how it comes out.
So when I met with the all of that township board, they approved to move forward with this. And so that's when I got a hold of Ron, that kind of agenda. To talk to you about this stuff. I was already talking about the soy transportation coalition and then get. Ask for your group to move forward. And David, do you have questions or comments?
My question, I don't know how our players.
I don't either.
But, but at the end of that, whose road is that when we get that? Isn't it the county road?
There's, it's a township road.
Well, that's what I was going to say. So like this.
But who's, who owns the road out there in the camp?
Are these two?
The county commissioner, the county commissioner only two years ago closed the road without even another by, all of that township. So that brings a huge question to me. We wrote, we put a road in there. Who is responsible for that road? Because we were very forgotten on that road. So having been in the bag.
That was a mistake and we all, we missed.
Is this, so basically the question is who, who owns the road and who was supposed to be putting that with me?
Is this the road where Steve, uh, Denny Creek became and talked about how some road got closed a little bit?
Probably.
That's a whole different story.
But is that, that's the road that you're talking about?
It is, no, it isn't.
But then they closed another road in that same area?
Well, I believe it's Laurel Road on further south.
That's right. That's right. As no bearing on this question, but only the fact that I'm raising the question, who, who is responsible when we're putting this road in? And who is going to have that move? If the township puts it in, did all these those. Procedures, there's a lot of labor work that has to be done.
Right.
Who, who is responsible for that road? When, when our township board moves on to hold other, I mean, who, whose road is that? When it's done, it would still be the township.
I'm going to guess it'll be township.
Right.
Yeah, that's the same thing. We're not taking ownership up on the. It's still their township road. It just works out better for them to do the way that they did through road. So what makes that different than, than Laurel Road itself? Who put those? So what is the difference? So who, who, who is supposed to do the legal work to get that acquisition done? Is that the township's responsibility or is it the county's responsibility? Because at the end of the day, I think the county's been on that road.
I don't think the county, I mean, I don't think, I think it goes under the cap. As long as we got township, that's a township road.
And is it connecting to township roads?
Who's that?
They're all township.
Always a township.
Right. Three hundred seventeenth's township road, Laurel Road's township road, Georgia Road, which is to the east, that is a county road. It's paved.
That's my only question is, before the township, there's a lot of labor work and things and, and who is responsible for that labor work?
It's still only three hundred seventeen street looking down.
That's right. It's going to be called three hundred seventeen.
It's going to be called three seventeen.
Exactly.
Right.
And, 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 I mean, it's going to take legal, we don't have legal staff on our side. The county does. But so who, who should be taking responsibility on this?
That's a good question. I don't know what to answer that. I would like to ask Rod, I mean, what they did, because Rod did, there's a lot of tasks, our proposed, our.
And I don't.
So how they did that, I don't know.
But at the end of the day, nobody's got any money yet either.
Right.
Uh, we got to, we got to check for the.
Rodney knows the hundred thousand.
Oh, he did, okay. Is that from KDOT?
That's responsible.
Okay.
If these are, if this is all township roads, what part of this project involves the county?
What's located?
So that's my question. Is it, do we have, are we involved in getting some sort of authorization or is part of this going to be financially our responsibility or what's involved in that?
I think that's the discussion's been had. So Josh, I mean, I know on the last one, the Berkeley Road, they did that with. I don't know who else was involved in that. They brought everything to us and the bag was all here with us. And they closed a. Boston.
So when I, I had discussions, Jeremy Winger, uh, this is the last Thursday or Friday, and he's going to draft the documents. As far as, you know, taking of the road, as far as working with the landlord, but probably. I'm, I'm more willing to work with him than, than try to move this forward. I know Clint, he has indicated even if you weren't willing to help him. So. Even though it's not like township, I do have land in that township. I'm going to, I'm going to stay with.
I'm in favor of moving forward and I'm going, I'm going to do all I can. But that was just the bigger question I had is. Because. If the county commissioner or the county was, was any kind of a robot, I, I just completely felt like we needed to pass that. Question upon and find out who really broke that law state and who was responsible. I myself spent a lot of time.
I've been, it will be, it will still be a township road. I don't, unless you're talking about giving roads to the county, which I don't think the county's in. Any interest in taking over the roads. But I'm just saying that if, if it's a township road, it stays a township road, then I think it's going to be a township road. The problem that I see that you have is if we started getting involved with township stuff, now suddenly we have sixteen of them and all. So I mean, we got to be careful on how that happens.
I know. And that's my biggest question in that, that boat was for this two years ago, right? That's a conversion. But that should have been township road also. No, and that's my biggest question in, in that, that road was created two years ago, right, exactly, three years ago, because that should have been township road also.
Or if a township is going to close a road, the county will close the road, township county last night. What's supposed to do?
Now, when they followed the other procedures over with that, I don't know, I mean, I can't space those up through this question.
Uh, I can assure you that the township has no record for non-minutes. Whoever ever even notified that that road was closed, even today.
So is the road closed now?
It's got signs up, it's got gates across, the township has nothing to do with it.
And that's.
So did the county gave it off?
No.
Did the county gave the road off?
I think it was.
Yeah.
So then.
I remember, I remember, I remember this one to, to, to a team I was retired, this road that Glenn Tyson came out and asked them to close. The previous commission, which was getting there, Glenn Tyson said, and I asked them to close our. So who we come to, I don't know, that was a previous one, which I do, which is.
The only question I've raised is, who will move this thing?
Is there a stop sign at, at that intersection with Laurel Road? Or is there a stop sign?
Yes.
Okay. We'd have to have a resolution to put stop sign. At that smooth location.
To move it, right.
To move it, yes.
I'm not sure if I'm reading this map right, so.
Okay.
On reference three, does it already have a gated?
It doesn't, it already has, that's where you see.
This one here is what you want to put.
That's why, because you come from this direction.
Well, ours is, I think.
This doesn't have the weekend signal.
Ours is just doing a resolution.
They don't want to.
So it's cheaper to do.
Yeah. And it probably is safer too, because that way you don't even have to cross the road if you're going to the south, you're going to the north.
The NSF does not.
So this three hundred seventeen road, if it was across, what, how much?
That just seems like a lot easier.
Well, yeah, it's, it's more money.
That's your road.
That was my first, that's why I'm asking.
Who's, who's, the question is though.
Uh, this Laurel Road at three seventeen comes off on Roger.
Yes. That is township.
So what is the township's plan with that road after it closes?
I'd say a ban with it.
No, that, that's a bridge that's got to be crossed. And, and like I said, we, we moved and we'll go forward, but there's a lot of questions, just like.
Well, I mean, you can't have two three hundred seventeen roads.
I'd say revert back to Orlando.
And it's go back to the last road.
It's not a county road, it's going to be a township road, so you guys have to, whose township's that?
All of that.
It's all of that.
So you guys have to figure out a way to do that.
Yeah. So. So do we need to commission motion for all of that township to move forward or you just give?
I don't think so. You guys completely talked about, okay, you have to do a series of ones, make the stop sign.
Okay.
And we'll do that on the next one.
So you're gonna. Fair, fair enough, I just, I just wanted to make sure we didn't have roadblocks at the border.
Alright, so I'm going to get.
Yeah, I mean, I get what you're talking about, yeah, because I remember that, as you said, that the gate was across it. That's the, that's the one Denny Creek coming up.
Yeah.
That's exactly right.
That was two years ago, and the old previous question. That was probably.
It was, it was actually closed for the township. If anything.
Right, right. So why can't, here's a question, happen, you can't move a railroad. By resolution, if the township wanted to.
I'd have to look at the history. How it was closed first.
Yeah, I'm sure, sir, if you, if you close a by resolution, why can't you?
I, I'm not proposing to tell, I'm just thought. That's what I'm trying to get, who will move the next?
Yeah.
Because that, that showed me that the county had authority on all those roads and then the county, and the township was doing nothing but maintaining the roads that the county owned.
Well, supposedly, supposedly, uh, yeah, I hold my tilak, I always start that up. They sell out notice and everything and that's one that I suppose, that was with the previous question, so I'm speaking before that, you have to go back and look at the notes and that, but it was.
But that, well, that tells me the county owns the roads. The township was only out there maintaining for the county.
I don't know if I could, I mean, the taxes are collected by the township, so they're not the county.
For the maintenance.
Right. So I, I could. And that the township can't close the road.
So really, when I hear that news, because not only one, it takes a legal person to be able to tell us that question, answer that question. We can sit here and argue what we want.
On what?
Who owns that move out there, who owns it yet?
The people, I would guess that too, other person in the county.
So you ready to move to the next step?
I am, I don't know that's the.
So, we can move forward.
Let's move forward.
I'm going to continue to work with Burlington, and, and my next step will be to get Burlington Northern KDOT out there, take a look, see how much land acquisition is going to be. There's, you know, acre, two acres, whatever. Speaking with Burlington Northern, there was a couple of other items that I says, guys, when we do this, I would like you to not forget about this. I want to try and get a bridge across there and that's where Mike is going to maybe come in and give us, Mike Steen, he's the director of the soy transportation coalition. Think he's up in Ankeny, Iowa today, Mike, is that correct? Can you hear us all okay?
I can hear you.
Man, I'm going to get some sound.
Can you hear me?
And so Mike, he's the subject matter expert on the STC along with Dennis Hoope, he's got a wealth of knowledge on it, so. I asked Dennis to come down and maybe he can answer any questions that you might have. So uh, I gave you the handout on top twenty innovations. Can you, have we got sound yet, Mike?
I can hear you guys.
Can you try to speak in more again?
I can hear you.
No, I don't want to.
Mike, would you want to call my phone and just use cell phone?
Hi.
Okay.
I wish you could move your speaker or be pretty strong.
Yeah.
Maybe it's in common.
Yeah. Yeah, that's it. You know, it's going.
Cell phone, of course. For sound.
I mean, I can hear you.
You're going to have to talk a little out of mic.
Okay.
But we do have a sound. Well, I'm going to put this up here.
Okay. So Mike, do you want to talk just a little bit about the twenty innovations and then the Kansas Soybean Commission? We have budgeted a hundred thousand dollars to do ten bridges or two, ten innovations. Did you get sound?
Can you get feedback from Maggie Tier and us?
Okay. So why don't I let you talk, Mike, and I'll just be quiet for a minute.
Okay, hopefully you'll give a feedback, are you, are you uh, offering to be called?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, super. Well, thank you for the opportunity to visit with you today. You have the, the presentation in front of you and I'll, I'll just. I'll labor the point, but I'll give you a quick presentation of the soy transportation coalition. So as Ray said, I'm based in the Iowa soybean association building, but the organization is comprised of thirteen state soybean associations or boards. The Kansas soybean commission is one of those thirteen, so you're, we're farmer funded and farmer led organization. And as the name suggests, we work on transportation issues that are a consequence to farmers. And so you'll find me working on an issue related to rural roads and bridges, obviously the subject of this morning. But that extends to our freight rail system, our inland waterways, as well as our ports. So any of those boats of transportation that are of importance for connecting farmers and what they grow. To our customers, whether it's domestic or international customer. And, and so uh, what, one of the, the topics that will always be dear, but dear to our heart is rural roads and bridges. Because that's the load of transportation that is most relatable to farmers. If you frankly, if you can't get rural roads and bridges right, frankly, it doesn't really matter the condition of our freight rail system, our ports, et cetera. Because the, the delivery will never occur, the transaction will never be completed. And so one of the things that you uh, obviously are very well versed in. And something that I observed throughout the country in rural areas is that. The area of the country where the condition of our rural bridges are the most dilapidated. Uh, also happens to be the area of the country where resources are the most scarce, and that's rural America. And when you look at the number of bridges that are, that's a rural county within its jurisdiction. You have a lot of times, fifteen, a hundred, two hundred, three hundred, uh. It's, it's quite substantial that we consider the cost of replacing one single rural bridge easily can cost. Three hundred, four hundred, five hundred, you know, even up to a million dollars. And I don't know of too many rural counties that just have that kind of money sitting in their piggy bank, waiting to just be deployed. Uh, to all of these, fix all of these rural bridges. And so it's, it's quite consequential and, and so one of the things that uh. I observed is, so there's this dilemma that you've got, again, the area of the country where the bridges are the most dilapidated. Also happens to be the area of the country where resources are the most scarce. That's the, that's the challenge. But one of the things that I have uh, observed and, and learned over the past number of years is that. There are a number of innovative concepts and approaches that have been utilized in a number of areas of rural America. With considerable success. With replacing and repairing rural bridges for a fraction of the prevailing, a fraction of possibly more prevailing methods that are more widely utilized. Without compromising safety. So I would learn about these concepts and then I would ask, well, why is it this more widely utilized that, you know, a lot of times there's nothing. There's nothing sinister or pernicious about it, it's just simply kind of a, kind of a reflection of humanity that there, just because a, a good idea is that implemented. In one area doesn't mean it's, it's migrated over to the other area. And, and so one of the things that, one of our conclusions was, whether it's a rural education opportunity, we can play as a farmer funded and farmer led organization. Arguing that many more grassroots organizations, like your membership is comprised of farmers. So we can certainly play a role in helping increase the awareness of some of these innovative concepts. So what we did is we assembled a group of thirteen bridge engineers and experts from throughout the country. So there's thirteen states that are at the heart of the soy transportation coalition. We uh, enlisted the help of thirteen bridge engineers and experts, uh, one from each of those states. Some of those officials are from state DOT, some of them are from county engineers, some of them work for universities, some of them work for. Uh, private engineering firms, so there's a pretty good diverse group of people, but the common element was they, these are pretty forward thinking. Uh, engineers and experts who have a good feel for some of these innovative concepts that are out there. It was a leave and selected, what made its way onto the list, it was this group of engineers. But the, the criteria that I did establish was number one, to make it, to make it fly off the list, that number one had to provide significant cost savings. I wasn't looking for a concept that would shave five percent off the cost of building a bridge. That's not that intriguing, obviously notable, but not that, not that significant. We wanted to look at significant cost decreases. Number two to make it fly off the list, it had to be validated by a credible engineering entity. So we weren't looking for someone had a fact that the cocked tip would have an idea on how to build a bridge more efficiently. We wanted, this had to be something that was validated by a credible entity like Purdue University, like the federal highway administration, like the. Like where the state university, some, some credible engineering entity, because we wanted to make sure that safety was not compromised. Um, if it didn't check the safety box, it didn't make it onto the list. Number three, it had to be accessible for the large swath of rural America. We clearly understand that every. Concept, just because you've demonstrated in one location, doesn't mean it's going to be a good fit in another location. So there's this, one of the things that these engineers would say is location, 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 and that's clearly a reality. But we wanted to have concepts that were. German in a significant area of the country, we didn't really look for just a concept that it's only going to work in the most, say, northwest part of Minnesota. For example, we wanted something that was going to be widely accessible throughout the country. So we, we did this report and we issued the results of it. And as you can see on slide, whatever, five, it has just the list of the top twenty innovations that resulted from this discussion of these thirteen bridge engineers. Some of these concepts are related to replacing. Bridge, ten are related to repairing a rural bridge. Uh, the next page just highlights, who was on that with a principal analyst, that were these five, three, four, eight members, these thirteen engineers and experts who selected. What made its way onto the list. And as you can see, the representative from Kansas is Joe Lozetti, Calvin Reed from the Kansas Department of Transportation. Through all twenty of these concepts, so I wanted just to give you a, a feel for the concepts that made their way onto this list. And how they're featured and presented. And one of them that a lot of the group was very interested in and thinks that there needs to be a lot more emphasis on is the use of rear roof black cars. For replacing a, a rural bridge. Uh, there's a engineer that, who was on, a member of our group, uh, who is from the east Iowa. He has replaced thirty bridges in this county via this method. And uh, his, the count, the population of that county is twenty one thousand people. So every time he's done this, he's saved at least a hundred thousand dollars versus more than the traditional method that he would normally use. In replacing a, a rural bridge. So let's just say a hundred thousand dollar savings per time he's done it, plus by that, by thirty bridges that he's replaced via this method. So easily three million dollars that he has saved his county residents just by doing. By utilizing this method. And again, a, a population of twenty one thousand people, three billion bucks is a, is a significant benefit to that county. But here's the, it just shows the profile of replacing a, a bridge via this method. So typically you could replace a bridge, again, more using the traditional methods of two hundred seventy five, three hundred fifty thousand dollars. Obviously, everything's only becoming more expensive with each passing day uh, during current times. But replacing it using this method, a hundred twenty thousand dollars, it's, it can support all legal loads, it's faster to construct. Uh, the next page just shows what they look like, it wouldn't really tell that what you're driving over is a, is a former rear roof black car. Unless you really. Train your eyes to look for it, but that's, that's what they look like again, he's done thirty of these, some of them are just, you put on the button that's like the, the larger picture. But then also you can have, you can have a bridge for, via this method where you're using supports as well. Uh, the other, another concept is one to highlight that was really of interest to the group was the use of. Vibratory H-piling drivers, so this is how you actually drive the piloting of the ground. And this is kind of a learning experience for me about how you can pass up for about cost savings by just said. By just using this method versus more the traditional uh, impact pile driving, which is similar to just pounding a nail into the ground. So you, you kind of use the blunt force from the top to be able to drive this piloting into the ground. This method using a vibratory. This method, using a vibratory hammer, can result in significant cost savings. It's safer, it's faster. So one of the county engineers that I interfaced with on this report, he said, he recently used this method to drive ten piling into the ground for a bridge. It cost him two thousand dollars versus twenty-five or thirty thousand dollars if he would use that method. Again, I can't think of too many rural counties that wouldn't benefit profoundly. Picture shows what it looks like. So you're taking this bridge box, you have a vibratory hammer, you're attaching it to an excavator, you just vibrate the piling into the ground. And again, more cost-effective, faster, and safer. The final concept I'd like to share with you just as an example is the use of various soil structures. Again, another very popular innovative approach that's been utilized of using this method, you're replacing a bridge for seventy-five to ninety-five thousand dollars versus easily double that. And in the final page is what they, what they look like. One of the things that we really wanted to make sure to emphasize is actual bridges that you could go to, that you could drive over, that you could talk to an engineer, a highway superintendent that's actually utilized them. Can I actually talk about the pros and cons of that approach? We didn't want to feature concepts that were just on paper on the shelf of some university engineer who thinks it's a good idea, but it's never been implemented. We wanted to be concepts that have actually been utilized. So we issued this report and it got some raised attention. As Ray had said, what our next step is, is we want to provide further encouragement to counties that think this could be a good fit for them. And obviously, this is a decision for the counties to make. We're trying to provide an additional incentive that if the county thinks that this is a good approach for them, they have a good fit, they have a particular candidate bridge that would be a good fit. Working with the Kansas Sowing Commission, we are doing a demonstration project within the state where we're aspiring to replace the goal is ten bridges in ten different counties where we will provide this Kansas Sowing Commission, working with the soy transportation coalition, ten thousand dollars to the county, to help fund the rights, some of their plant planning, planning, pre-engineering, design expenses of replacing a bridge, provided that. There's two criteria. The first one is, one of the concepts from this report is utilized because we want to encourage the more widespread use of some of these concepts. And then number two is that the bridge that is replaced, or it could be a major, it could be a major repair as well, not a minor repair, but a major repair, would have to be in an area in which soybeans are grown and transported. So, which is not going to be a problem in those stage counties. So every rural bridge in your county is going to be, going to fit that profile. But those two criteria, number one, one of the concepts from your report has to be utilized. Number two, it has to be a bridge that is a part of the soybean supply chain. Soybean farmers have to utilize. So that's kind of what we're wanting to just explore with you and for you to be considering. I'm doing similar projects in eight other states. And so, I have projects underway with counties in other states where they're using some of these methods. And we've already issued the ten thousand dollar check to them. So we're proceeding. We would love to do a number of projects within the state of Kansas. And obviously, it's a good fit for those stage counties who would love to work with you. So I'll keep my comments there. If you have any questions or any kind of clarification, I would love to field them.
So Fred, you indicated there's a bridge in the planning stages up in your area.
Two of them are going to open a bid on that.
Okay.
But I didn't know that we had to take, I don't know what the bridge are, what their design's going to be.
Okay.
So.
The one that we did up by Hope would probably fall pretty close into a couple of those design stages that we built. I know probably four or five years ago, they did one up by Strand that is that metal.
Yeah.
That they put together and then they did one of those because we came up from Franklin County to Kansas.
That small bridge today might be that.
Yeah, and so I don't know what we have on our sheet that would slide into that, but I'm sure there's something in another area that would probably fall right into some of those requirements where we could utilize that thing. Now, if you just use a portion of that, or do you have to use the whole thing? Because they, on the Hope one, they did, they capitalized cheating. They must have on that bridge on the buttons. And, but they did have the large crane style pile driver. Is there portions of that that have to be followed, or does that have to be followed all in through out that?
Did you hear that question, Mike?
So was the question about, do you have to use all of that ten thousand dollars? Or do you have to like?
All the design features.
Utilize one of those methods.
That design feature.
The design feature, if you use parts of that design feature in that plan, are you still eligible for the ten thousand dollars?
Well, one of the counties we worked with, it was more of a modest, you know, bridge. Cost there wasn't as much of the pre-engineering and design expense. So there, it was to me was just shy of six thousand dollars. And so, we paid that. When I then, when we sent back to them, it's, hey, there's still some money in there. Well, if you want to do another bridge, we could pay that balance at approximately four thousand dollars. But we'll see if they get a new one, but yes. If sometimes the pre-engineering design costs are, they exceed ten thousand dollars, so what we're paying is a significant portion of that, or it's more than total expense. And then other times, that ten thousand dollars is more than what they need. I mean, it's usually, it's usually more than ten thousand dollars or close to it. But yes, we don't, if it's less than the ten thousand dollars, we would just don't pay that amount.
So if it looks like something that's going to be on the list, do we just have those age counties submit that to the soy transportation coalition, the design? Or how do we move forward?
So what counties usually do is, yeah, it's quite simple. They will first identify a candidate bridge where it would be appropriate or one of these particular concepts. And then all I need from the county is one, just assurance that, yes, we'll be using it. And that's just, that's my assumption, but just kind of a statement that can be sent to me via email. And then number two is how we get what concept they're going to use. Railroad flat harbages, vibratory H-piling, very slow stretches, GRS, IDS, whatever. That's all, that's all I really need to know. So what bridge it is and what method you're going to utilize. And then there is, we do have a very straightforward contract that we do. So technically, how it works is that the states, and in this case, Kansas Sowing Commission, they provide the funding to the soy transportation coalition. And the actual contract is between the county and the soy transportation coalition. And it just basically specifies, you know, one of the things I want to make clear is that we have no ownership stake, we have no point whatsoever. This is just a contribution to the county. The county retains full ownership and responsibility for the bridge. So there's things that specify that, so very straightforward contract. Since our funding is for the pre-engineering and design expenses, that funding has been, and it continues to be my mission, Frank, to be deployed early on in the process. As soon as that contract's signed, we can issue a check. I also, but we also recognize that building a bridge is not a weekend activity. It takes some considerable period of time. So we will have the dates that are listed, enumerated in the contract will, well, I want to give plenty of time to the county to have it completed. So we have some of these contracts that I have with counties. The commencement date of the project between the soy transportation coalition and the county will be, it starts like immediately as soon as we issue that ten thousand dollar check for the pre-engineering and design expenses. But then the conclusion date of that contract will be, well, until next year, twenty-twenty-three, because they're building a bridge and we also have something called mentor coming upon us. And that's not often a favorable type of build a bridge. So we bottom line is we were very open to having dates that are suitable and agreeable to the county.
So basically, those age counties need to work with Big Ryan, Robert May, and what, yes, and get you the information that you need. They're actually going to have opening of a couple of bids today on some bridges. So we'll see if they fall into guidelines or maybe the time, maybe the stars are aligned. Does anybody have more questions? Mike, thank you very much for pointing out this information, yes, thank you. I'm going to give them more information or feedback you want to add.
No, no, thank you. It was moving along with the sun was forward and our office was to okay down and something that would be very important that's worth pointing out. I guess.
Yeah, I think that one of our actions to, there's more straight. Or some of that stuff will find out too. I think there might be, one of you will find Robert, just some of those will find out. But we're working, we're looking to try to help make work.
And sixty percent of our brown pass, eleven of those country, you gotta be able to fit it.
Right.
To the ports and just to get it out of the county, which sometimes is just, anyway. Anything we can do to help, but.
Okay. So we'll move forward on that. Summarize, going back to our first discussion. We're going to go ahead and move forward and work with Burlington Northern. In fact, he was going to give the resolution to bring, and I guess I'll just bring it back to the township.
Yeah. And it goes back to that same question, this, this, this agreement you got with Burlington. It says on here, it says county. It says county on here, it didn't say township, it's county. And that goes back to now, who signed this? The park light, if you can, information, do it or hurry the township.
I think we signed the one for that.
Say that.
But the check came to the county and then we gave it back to the township.
Yeah. But anyways, the county needs to sign off, is that, is that correct?
I think on the resolution of Burlington Northern, I think that would be the question.
And who does, who does the legal work as far as the rest of the acquisition, that has purchased the property from ministry? Who does the legal work on getting that property changed? And is that, is that property go to the township then, or that property go to the county?
I think that that will be caged off, couples with that.
I know, okay.
So.
There's a whole bunch of entities involved. I know the county basically had to sign off on resolution for roads and water. Come here, I'm listening, but was there?
I didn't want to have to sign off. But as they said, the contract was saying that one of the roads in the county was not going to go for your mapping system to be updated. And all that was that is a township road is not going to go as planned. It's going to be rerouted. And that the commissioners just have to say, yes, you guys are taking care of all this. Yes, we agreed to let you guys proceed with the project.
I was thinking, Rob, we told you the railroad was the main part of that road. And they gave them a certain pieces of wall builder at the township and said a bunch of them. That's what I was.
They weren't good at it, but they brought in, that's a proposal of like three million dollars.
Right, right.
And I think. And hardly a hundred fifty, two or thousand somewhere is what their price tag was when they came up with local car.
Is that the same type of road these guys are on?
Pardon me?
Is that the same type of road this is?
I think it's closer to the same thing what they did out there. That's why I think that step kind of shown to their layout of how they did it. But like, it's just to kind of help get us out so they kind of can kind of record.
I think, I know the resolution that we signed for roads, I would ask Rob, and I know Rob, we could ask him how they did it and how they went about it, because he would tell, they just didn't. It's got to be a question of mine, and it's not something that, that, you know, the check just came last week.
Oh, we should know, yeah.
Because we tried to talk to them, they made it back to the county.
I could do that and I'm showing them and they were going forward.
Yeah.
I just thought our first step should be, what the commission said on this and how I did it.
Well, appreciate you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Consideration for STC and bridges.
So you started by the bridge, now, because I remember we talked about this. It's a year out.
Oh, yeah.
And the railroad wanted a different type of bridge, but they.
They want a big span, so in the future, if they run through tracks.
There's like two million dollars.
So it's way more than just. But I understand your problem getting around to it, yeah.
And I want to continue to work with Burlington and A dot.
Right, to see, you know, I don't.
The real problem there for that land or in that process is, is then it goes down, that ground goes up.
Yes, and it's a little narrow.
Machinery can't already do that inside machinery.
But you've got to go like.
So they need to go forth by the new roads being proposed.
I remember we were talking to Roy last night, and I want to keep the talk of the railroad about putting out just a crossing.
They don't want to.
Or using, yeah, they turn over a lot.
Yeah.
They want to get right across and that's okay.
They do, and that's, so if we can continue to visit with, talk with them, work with them, and safety is the main, yes, we got to get that changed. There's going to be something happening because it is more travel. And I know, I've talked to four people that are almost been hit. And that's why there's not much time aside there.
There's none.
It's just around that curve there. If you've got a roller or a bail hay or a heat box on the back of your truck, or if you're in a column on it, you can't sit in there. So, thank you.
Yeah.
Appreciate you.
I'll be there.
I thought I was putting out a cell phone. I don't know how to use one of them.
Okay. That'll work.
Yeah, and you want to. Chad, 6645.
I mean, I'm on the other side. November the 17th. So this weekend, I am in church. And I was like, that's like, if you had it up, I would. And everything that's got some real moves. All I've. Something I write about, whatever it is, everything is tied up.
Sure.
Where it slides together on the bottom, it's a pop and broke a piece of the house that come out. So it's. I was just.
All I can't believe we're ready to find it. Starting then running again. Oh, just here.
So.
I have two, we didn't do that sit down. And she's very good at our team. Interviewed with Ron. And he can start this, but he wasn't actually at the center. So we got more than that, I can start the open next book. So that's going to be the CBO this year.
So how do I know?
Yeah, yeah, he has.
So I'm making motion with her to hire Gemma Pollard into recycling department effective November 1st, 2022, and we paid $40,000. And also Jamie White and Roden Bridge, Weber and CBL check that affecting November 7th.
Do you have those of your positions still?
Um, that's it, we're kind of discussing the bridges that we have.
So this black car is every time.
We would purchase those from Bob the Railroad guy. That's where we. Um, it would allow more water flow if you have some, like I said, Grant Township has one. That's a pretty good sized bridge where we could put that structure or something like that in. What they got in there right now is like a three ton. So, and there's other locations where it's come in play for good. What we'd have to do is just have someone do the abutments.
Right.
And then.
Right.
We order the two rail cars, and then you fix them together, and then you have a road width. Something like that.
Right.
And the month structure, those on there, they've done that five strand or whatever.
Right, yeah.
On that paper.
Oh, 2.21. Yeah. Their nine of eight would be about. So you put two side to side. Know something wrong?
Some of them, I have a clear one wasn't enough by scrap, but one like that.
Yeah, right.
We've got some different pieces there where they just attach it, hold it together.
Yeah.
When they got ready to do that, and they call the Franklin County, and we came over here. And we watched them construct that one.
Yeah.
Just kind of see where we have it or.
You know, just like I.
I know what you're talking about, so I can remember first. But that's kind of a big deal. So some of the bridges and some of the. I can't believe.
Will probably be three combined.
I have. I love beer, but I have.
Well, I mean, you can even there really.
Well, my thanks is a lot, so I could be heard by.
I'm sure we can.
With my computer.
All right, I got some to talk here, some to talk. All right, we'll do the bridge openings, the bridges, the exterior bridges. The first thing we have here is from RFB. Well, it looks like they're not put all of it. I'm looking right now. Yeah, because it's good that I can do this. How do you, on the virtual?
And that's fine, you can pick all three, just read the bridge number and the price.
So let's do.
1.1.
No, this is just.
No, okay. That's long.
So I might have to. But I've done this before. It's almost like we got one bridge, it's not a bridge.
1.25.
So we all have good to work. Maybe they got more balls.
If they got separate, stack them separate three, three.
Here's a 1.25.
So RFB Bridge 125. Uh, the total bid is 550,000. 351, 62. RFB. And again, it's 550, 359, 62. Next one is Eber Construction. Construction is. 437. So 437, 952, 7. Next one is Elk Underwater. Elk Underwater is 527. 089 and 70. Next one is Y. I don't know that I have it together. So Grand Hill for Rob Cap is 372. Next one is Reese Construction. Next one is Reese Construction. Four, seven, zero, eight, twenty-two, point four three. Next one is WCI. Four, three, five. Three, nine, three. Last one is. And Brian Omar. It was on the top of three, eight, one, zero, one, five, point eight, zero. We want to do these one by one, do the engineers after now. So the bridge one twenty-five, engineers, that's not. It is. Five, seventy-six. Seven, oh, five, fifty. So the little bit of those is Wildcat, that's somebody, is that somebody? Sorry, Wildcat.
Apparently, Will Taylor.
So. We don't really know, like, we just some of them. Right.
We will go with numbers, we'll send you later the rapidation.
Right, so, yeah, I'll give all of these ones to you. Not for the back. On your. Okay.
I'll sit up here.
Okay, definitely. We should have a total. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. For the bridge. One, two, three, four, five. Okay, we're on the bridge one thirty-four, first one, Eber Construction. Five, twenty-eight. Six, seventy-five, point two, seven. Do you want these back in the rows? Next one is involved, that's certain. Four, four, five, one, six, seven, point. Reese Construction. Five, five, three. Nine, seven, two. Point four, seven. Brian Omar. Four, six, three. Six, two, eight, seven. Five, two, three. Eight, one, two, five, five. Uh, the WCI. And that one, the engineers asked for those. Six, nine, three. Nine, nine, four, seven. Next one is the bridge number. Two twenty-one. Probably number five, four, four, three. So this one is from Eber. Four, five, one, two, seven, six, point two, six. Five, two, six. Four, two, six, yes. Next one is from Elk Underwood. Four, nine, seven, seven, four, nine, point zero, five. Next one is Wildcat. Three, eight, seven, six, nine, one, point eight, zero. Next one is Reese. Four, six, three. Three, four, nine, and eight, two. Next one is WCI. Four, one, nine, four, three, three, point five, zero. Our last one is from Brian Omar. Three, eight, three. Seven, four, zero, point eight, zero. Engineers asked one on that. Five, forty-eight. Nine, eighty-five, point zero, five.
You'll type those back, get back those, just get all calculated, checked, and give your reservation.
And we are gonna do that. So we'll, uh, Ron, you didn't have any answers. We have two times for this, so. Amen. We'll do the design, we'll do economic, we'll announce the. And then we'll do the.
Website. All right, so my first thing, last thing, Brett Racker and I were speaking, and he is. Um, Garrett, which is a partner, but he's handling our stuff, I'm more familiar with him, so it's pretty easy work, I've never worked with Garrett before. And we were discussing that Kramer Consulting, their engineering plan was reduced to a state KTH by November first.
And so.
Yeah, for the sale waste work project, um, and it's kind of flexible, but not super flexible, and then you need to, um, about six to eight weeks. To review these projects, and then have to have the connective, the publishing, the bidding, etc., and so we are on a pretty tight, um, timeline. So I'll reach out to Kramer Consulting, um, and we'll all step back, uh, if you recall, um, late January, early March, I wrote a letter, uh, to, um. To Kramer that I had you guys, that you guys approved to sign, it was from you, sent to him, that said all the deadlines and what we needed to do. Um, I also sent an email, and myself, and Brett has been in contact, so they, they were well aware, and they did, and they were well aware of the deadline, so this wasn't something that we would like to base it on, on providing for them. So Kramer notified me last week that it would still be another twenty days before he could even possibly have the engineering plan done. Um, so, and I, you know, I expressed my concern with that, and Brett was gonna also reach out, and here's the contact information, I didn't know if you wanted it to Kramer, if you. Wanted to just, Brett said, you know, it's a possibility, and it just worked out, otherwise it wouldn't actually just. Um, Brett said, you know, they just wants to me with that, it, it's possible it worked out, or it could actually not work out, and it might not, and it might cause us to be more worried if it's not great, so, um, it doesn't care, it doesn't. They either, they don't have sewer, or they're out, or they're gonna have to pay all that extra money. So, um, I know that if you guys wanted to, how you wanted to proceed, it felt like maybe Josh should send a letter or reach out, or if you guys wanted to send a letter, reach out, or if you just wanted to think that, you know, wanted me to continue the pressure on how this week will. Thank Kramer.
Yeah, hi.
Okay. So I just wanted to bring it to you.
The reports, we will do them first.
Instead of it will be done. I, I called and did with him, he says that that November deadline is really not, that deadline is an arbitrary number that we created, or someone created, he said that is not required, and that he actually has lost time. And I just, just reiterated him that we had already invested in hiring this company to assist us, who were awarded the two hundred fifty thousand dollars, which is to help alleviate the cost on these homeowners that are already paying an extra special levy. And that we really needed them to do their part to get the study for us, so that we don't.
The, the class I attended on the speech, I forget to make sure I knew how to do all this and keep everything on timeline, did say November first, so when I contacted Brett, who has a lot of experience with this. His words were, um, I'm not sure what the backlog, um, for the plan review at the KTH, but CBDG does encourage those plans to be submitted before November first. What's at stake is the construction contract must be awarded by three, fourteen, twenty, three, four, this means that bids have to be received and reviewed by the engineer, and the commissioners need to approve the low bid and contract. Um, at the revenue meeting at the very latest, in order to have, and then he's, um, also on a conversation, he stated that this takes six to eight weeks for KTH to look at, depending on the backlog, so that's where the concern is, is that. Um, and then, so then, we would at least have to have it paper by February, um, so it's, it's pushing it, so we could just hope that he's right and go forward or continue to reach out to us, just one of instructions.
Well, they do a lot of work with KTH, so they should, they're, they're familiar with what's. He's, I can't imagine what.
I hope so.
They know how to do that, so. But I don't.
Yeah, I mean, well, but, by the way, some of your conversation, do you think that all of the seven just basically?
I mean, he understood my concern and urgency. But he didn't really feel like the deadline that had been requested was really an accurate deadline, and so he was still kind of, yes, we'll, you know, continue to work on this to get it done, but he did not.
He's not committal about it, no.
Not at all, and I just stressed that this was very important to the homeowners.
Okay.
For the overall project, this was very important to them.
Yeah, I can reach out and just say, the. You know, there's obviously anxiety about the March twenty, twenty-three aspect of it, so if he thinks this is a soft deadline, what's his trajectory? And then to report next week.
Well, you, you might write down your contact. So you're bothering, all right, this next one, I'm taking, we have another construction form for some of the new information.
I'll get it, I'll have it.
I'm doing it, yeah. Making it.
So I'm seeing. Yeah.
Okay, um, so the next thing I have is, um, the website's closed, super closed, um, I have a training on the second, which will tell me the next process is good, and I'll be able to know exactly what age the department head will need, have meetings, and get with it. So I'll have more information on that, but my current thing is, I can, I feel like we don't have any, um. We don't have any policies currently on who has the website, who could make changes, what changes, any policy at all, and I, I hate that, so there's, if someone would go ahead and maybe, um, change what we've done, um, on their own, that. If you want to hold that accountable, but in some way to hold them accountable, my next issue is that we have a ton of users currently on, um. On the county website, the one we have now, so a lot of people can go in and make changes, however, we're only allowed to, um, have it eight going forward, so I did propose, um, I think there's eight names there, um, and then it say, um. Chris would like more, Chris Wells, Shilwell's would like more than one person in his office, it would be up to him to sign in for them, or give them his password, if he felt he wanted to oblige it to another person, but I thought maybe we just made the department head. Um, of the departments who do go in there and make changes, Ryan's not allowed to go in and make changes, so I can't let him off, he can always contact me, and whoever wants to make a policy. So that was, it's just kind of a thought, and I think you have to, it's not right yet, so I don't feel that's in the.
So when you're talking about going into the website and make changes, why would anybody go outside like that?
So some changes, so some are, would be staffing, maybe changing information, fees change, uh, maybe addition a feature that they want to add, and a form that they created, um, my concern is more like. Someone to our homepage and figuring out how to do it, and I'm liking something, or, or kind of not decide whether to spend.
So the homepage, you don't have any, there's every one person.
So I, I would, maybe you, does it make that, um, but we don't have that now, so, and there are different levels I can set for people, so if that's on any. So if that's something you'd like to consider also, that you want everyone to have X level or just one person have this level or?
I think that you want one person to handle this, not a lot of places that have a cluster.
Right.
Somebody else to make a change, but talk, talk and decide if it's a good idea. Apparently, necessarily, they do the change on the front where they. Department, their department makes something, I think the department heads can have an assignment. And if they give their assignment to their employees, then. I mean, that, that won't change that, but. That's on their individual pages or on the homepage. I don't know how many people need a lot more on the homepage changing the homepage.
When will we know the keys of going in and making updates?
So the, it looks so, or the second, I have my training, my how I train the, getting along with the department directors. And then I think they're, they're trying to, they're aiming for like the week of the fifteenth of November, for me to try to schedule stuff with the department head. And get their sites where they want. So probably then, I don't know how much, how much information I'll get about using the site on the second, so I guess on the fifteenth. But I'm, I know it's evening, but I can set different settings as well. I can give them these names and they can assign users for each person and they can do different settings. Like maybe, you know, say, you know, Rhonda can do anything, Amanda can do anything, but then maybe, you know, they have the places they have. And do a little bit less or something, they can set different settings.
So, and, and maybe this is for the department head meeting. Whereas to find out if the department heads want to have that or not. Like, I'm not a techie person. I take care of our website and our website's kind of a mess of a business because I'm not techie enough to make it look good. So for me, if I was apartment head, I'd be like, here's what I'd like on my page when you're down. So I, I, I guess.
Which I think even if they have a username, I personally am willing to help them a hundred percent of that. I don't know how with them having assigned it, but not feeling comfortable.
Well, you have everybody doing their own thing, but there's now you got, there's one that's on this, this one that's on this, there's one on that, so.
I do know, I remember which county it was, they had, I think it ended up being their emergency management director because they had IT experience. But it was kind of a little dual role and they said it took like five or 10% of their time.
McCurran's about to say.
I just, I, I was just remembering that that happened. Like that first, that was their main, it was his main position. And then I think he said like 10% of his role was being the IT and he managed the website. And people that wanted changes sent them to him and he would visit with them and come up with final, you know, product. And then he would be the one that actually put everything on there. So, yeah, I don't.
So I did try to do a Google search, but didn't go and call other counties, but I couldn't find like a simple Google search. But I'm happy to reach out to other counties and see if they have.
It was just something I remember. Yeah, I don't remember which county it was, but I think there's a couple of different ways to do it. I like the idea of continuity of the way the pages look and how things, you know, flow on each page and.
I would check this, suppose. Mission or something, I don't believe in walking, whatever people.
And you know, right now, it hasn't, it, you know, the, what I've done so far, I, I couldn't be telling you, I couldn't even give you a five person, I mean, it's way less. It takes no time for me to make the update that they asked. So I, again, I have no problem being that person.
Well, that's the thing is some of the very.
But I don't have to be, yeah, but I also don't want to be, I don't want to be addicted or I'm offering to do whatever you, you guys decide. I think fashion design, how you would like it and open there.
But with you just saying that, I can see how that could also be efficient for making changes. And let's say I could have the ability, if I go in, it might take me a long time to do any changes where you just.
Would that mean if the department has, wouldn't be able to, for example, want to be able to upload in some names?
We would have to give her access to it.
Yeah, and you would have to get access to, there would still have to be access points, you know, some of you would have, have to have no matter what.
Yeah, yeah.
Jobs. So we got some.
That would take up a lot of my time. That would be, that would be over time.
I think I have some department heads in here, so this is not, there is a half, who would like, without saying what do I want on the page, just have somebody else put on there. Versus who would rather do it themselves. So let's go with, who would like to have one person do all the website pages well? I mean, that's pretty classy.
I'm with all of them, like, here's what I want, make it look good.
Yeah, right.
That's, I mean.
So why not be independent because they're all kind of a system? Or are we the search?
You're trying to, they're trying to, but they handle everything on their own. And so I think they would key on access. So you can just drop off one of the names and we could add like another, you know, someone really didn't want to get a name on here. And then one of the users can actually add on or just get his password, I think, which is charged.
So these four items down here is what you need us to decide on?
That's just mine, that was my opinion, that, yeah, don't need to decide it. You, you're.
So what do we have in your, your training of this?
So I personally have this training on the second to give me instructions on how I'm going forward with it. So I can then get ahold of the department leads and let them know what the next steps are and schedule plans with them. Now that, and that, they're gonna go over full training then, help with editing the site, stuff like that.
Do we have any policy on?
I see one that's not.
No, we don't have any on the website.
So they're rounded up.
We don't even have the IT.
Yeah, so on the website.
Brett and I actually discussed it and she wasn't wanting to, she'll be, she would actually help me over the side thinking of all the names that I'm, she's right there and I can help her.
If there's not a totally, uh.
She, I would put it up and it would say.
So just start with the site.
I would fly it, yeah. And, and that's not something like Rhonda's where she's updating every day or like Stephanie who has, who has. This is something that's set, we get it set and it just says join, let's rechange.
So tell me what all the on this one.
I, I do have it ready to show you, they have the initial proof. But right now, all they did was migrate our own site to a new design. So now it's up to us to put, like, early in development, for example, if the building permits will be able to be online, they'll be able to fill it up online. They should be able to have a calculator, a show with her and everything done online, so just.
So when you're saying, and Stephanie had to go back, what, what?
No, they're there, so she has minutes on every day or every week at least. And she has to update, like, constantly is what I'm saying. And she has jobs that she has based right.
So there's no person out there that's on this.
No, 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 I'm just saying that they're want that if I, if I did now, it would be five percent. If I was doing all of, you know, all the stuff Rhonda has to do with the minutes and the gins and whatever and all the stuff to separate. Then, yeah, I get it, that would be the five percent.
And I think he was talking like overall content, right? Whereas this is like part of the.
Overall contact would stay the same, the basic page layout would be the same, it's just that there's specific areas that, like, like if you wanted to. To recognize, you know, accomplishments and we had a little blog on there, a little section for accomplishments for that, you know. So and so got promoted to this or welcome our new employer, those types of things. If we add those to the page, then somebody would have to update that.
Who are, one of the front pages is the one that needs to have one person. And a lot of very, the branches off of, but you're starting to somehow deep on those, so. We just get a lot of all of this. Yeah, they would like to follow it.
Are there different levels? So you can have authority over everything, then I can have authority over just my stuff and Stephanie can have authority over her stuff and then saying, yeah, I think two different.
I think everybody's, I think I've got it put off, but I don't. Again, I think you want to make sure it's there in context so everybody looks essentially.
And then, and then.
Nineteen different things.
So maybe that's part of the policy, maybe, you know, it has to come through you or just maybe drastic layout changes or something. Or maybe, or there's a couple of us, maybe there's a, the three people that we sit down and be like, okay, this is not a name now.
Right.
Anyway, just.
So you don't know if we're gonna do this.
I will, but I think it's, I wanted to present it to you now so you have your thoughts and maybe you guys can think of stuff where you had an assignment for me to look at some other things. But yeah, it's more of a, nothing needs to be decided today.
Okay. So, and as a treasurer, we're gonna be doing payments on there.
You will, the payments will be added on.
So if any department is doing payments, we'll have.
We're gonna figure that out. And that's gonna have to be something, you know, when we, when we go in with the training. And other counties do it, so I'm sure.
Is this something that the department challenges you to?
They could, but they don't want to get their layer, it, they, yeah, they have a, yeah, and there is a link on our, so that, you know, goes to their own website. Exactly, yeah.
Right. Okay.
But I want to just make one comment, just because of what I'm experiencing right now. I would recommend that we have any person assigned, but they're back out.
Right, yeah.
Yeah. You know, you know, right.
What we have right now is Amanda, let's be honest, we have the, we have the.
I mean, right, I would have a perfect side about not, and if you're only a third person, you don't know where, whatever, it works.
Yeah, yeah.
There's no hidden secrets of it, if you aren't two people that have the ability, because if one's down, we want somebody else to step around. Okay, Department Head, welcome everybody. Talk to you.
We're good, we're better than us.
Well, you look really good for being in the.
Let's just start with Matt, what are you doing?
Good.
Yeah, what's up with your department?
So we've got all of our sixteen percent paid collection that we hear, that we speak. We'll be moving into going out and doing permits and see what structure to have. Building permits on them have been finished, we put them on for the tax year, January one. As far as analysis. Everything's complete. I'll be starting to do the market audit for next year or four, to kind of be a doctor of the number. And so everything's on track, it values out.
Did you get that, I call it residential, commercial, agriculture?
I'm sorry, what?
Did you get that form for the residential, commercial, agricultural? I'm confused.
It's probably on my desk someplace, I used to have my desk.
Oh, sorry.
Yes, I did.
And everything with the new mapping company or who got all up and filling?
They've had, they've hit a few stacks. It's not up and ready. There, when they went to put the layers on, the parcel layers, he ran the report to see where, what lines overlapped. Because parcel lines should not overlap. There were over a thousand instances where parcel lines had overlaps, he's going in and cleaning that up for us. He had to go in and still do the gaps, as of last week. So hopefully this week we will have maps, working maps in place. Getting those layers updated to off into our online apps. It ran into more hiccups than he thought he would, but he wanted to get us clean maps, so.
There. Christine Foster. How are you doing?
Fabulous.
I'm still trying to figure out.
This is my.
I'm trying to figure out why she didn't want to ask.
So in our office, the tax records for the last two county tax sales have been completed. And I'm gonna work with the auditor to see if there will be any impact with that because we have so much that we evaded in twenty two. That actually should have been evaded in previous years. I don't, I don't know if that has any impact and just, or we just need to make a note of that on our financials. But I met with the firm on Thursday. Remember, they had a witch bomb, who manages tax sales that are. Constantly control to the county. It was a great conversation. She sent me kind of the preliminary information of how they manage tax sales. And I sent that over to Josh, so he could see kind of the legalities of what they do. But basically, they perform options like the county attorney would. We don't pay them, they get their fees from the sale. We still pay publication, we still pay title fees, that's right, that kind of thing.
So do they charge a fee on top of whatever they sell for?
They charge the fee because it's allowed to by statutes if they're not the county attorney. However, that comes out of any sale proceeds. So a great example, because I've seen this, if a parcel sells for five dollars, they don't get any money from that. They write off what their remainder of the fee would be. Because there's not enough money to pay anything out of that five dollars. So they don't send the county a bill for anything for their fees. It comes out of the sale and then they write off anything where they don't receive enough to cover their costs. And so it was a great conversation. They've been doing it for several years, like decades. They have a handful of counties that are contracted with them. And, and she is a person who said that if we wanted to discuss, I think, whether she's happy to come here or be on the phone. Answering questions of commissioners or council, I have. What counties, are they local counties, what county? Benway? Calais? There's about a handful. And most of them are, they have one out in far, far, far western Kansas, but most of them are western. By the state, eastern. Eastern or western? Uh, sorry, eastern, this side, eastern.
I mean, parcels, you have an extra city.
So like, so my next one, when I was talking to the phone, trying to run the phone, I just ran a quick report. And I don't know how it's been done in the past, but statute allows us to put vacant properties on the tax sales that have been the liquid term riders and not vacant. Three or more years. When I ran that report, two hundred and eighty parcels plus popped up. They date back to nineteen ninety four, which is a red flag for me, because we did have a conversion to C I C around seventeen eighteen. When I looked at that timeframe, a hundred and twenty five of those have the liquid taxes prior to two thousand and eighteen. So I would spend time with my staff going into the, the previous system, just to make sure we didn't miss some conversion data or payments to get posted in the new system. But of those eighty three or vacant parcels of two hundred are non-vaked. And it's a, over eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars in the tax. And so when I mentioned that to her, she said that would be a rather large sale. But she said there are counties that now. Contracted with them year over year, they know they have a tax sale date and they just continue to roll through that process. We would work with them on if we want to set minimum bids. If we get to a point where we only have, let's say, ten parcels that are related, do we want to have a tax sale or not? So they're very flexible on everything, but they do basically tell them what we want to do as a county and they provide the services. She said if our, her sale had this many parcels, you know, they would break staff with them to help manage everything. And one of the few things that I know that we encounter with customers calling in is, well, I never got a tax statement after I bought the property or I never got confirmation that I owe these taxes, nobody ever told me anything. And then she shared the examples of what they speak to at the sale, what they present to each bidder. At the sale, what they have their sign after the sale. They actually have bidders register two weeks prior to the sale, the same time on the day of sale. So a lot of good things, and again, I was very forward, I said I've not gone through this process before. So I'm not sure exactly how it's been handled or passed other than my conversation with my staff who's been here. So it all seems that they have a process now. What's your timeframe that you would like to do this? Well, she said there's no way we'd be anything for the first year. Because there's basically, we have to scrub our data and get them the data to start the process. Contract with them and then we would have to sort of the notifications to all the parcel owners, publications. And then from there, she said, the first time they contract with somebody, she looks at about a few her process. Just because you're having to get so much data to them needed. And, you know, it's a new partnership for both sides. So she said, I used to say six to nine months, but that's pretty aggressive. And she said the number of parcels you have, same here. For the whole process.
Say just skip a time, the next several weeks where we can have a, you know, a dedicated discussion about it. I'll review the stuff. I'd like to know specifically are they taking the money out of the tax proceeds?
I'd like to know specifically are they taking the money out of the tax proceeds? Sale proceeds, they just run up a bill on their time and then they eventually will take that out.
Basically stack their fees. So initially it would be their fee, then, you know, we publish a better publication fee. So if the.
I'm talking about their fee. Say they say, well, we have a hundred thousand dollars. But we're only gonna collect on what we're receiving at the sale. Let's say we have ninety thousand dollars in taxes. Fit in to a, do they just take all that and the county gets no taxes?
Um, I don't believe that's the case. I believe it's a parcel by parcel line.
Parcel by.
Yes.
So I think it's a, yeah.
So do you want her here to come talk?
Probably.
Okay, okay. So I will get with run on counter.
Also, a quick question. How do we, if somebody comes on to pay the taxes? And let's say they're two years behind and currently, what year do we pay the taxes? And they get your money, what was it?
We have the customer tell us.
So in some conversations I had at K C, this was Josh, you've been with us. They're making charter resolutions that says when tax card comes in, their tax money has to go to the current year first. And the reason they're gonna do it is so people aren't doing, playing the system that paid three years ago and parent two is over. So your charter resolution means that they have to pay the current year, which means that they're not gonna pay the back taxes in the back tax.
So.
So that's all I'm gonna be thinking about.
Yeah, there's other treasures that have, I think there's been a lot of, uh, conversation with treasurers association on where doing, a lot of them are adopting resolutions to do that.
Right.
Um, but one thing to note is once the property goes to tax sale, um, all taxes are due. So where today, they come in, they can do partial payments on anything that's not the current tax year. At least that's what we've adopted in this county. Now, that's managed that way. Um, so about a fifty dollar on my two thousand and seventeen taxes, we will take that payment. It doesn't prevent them from going to tax sale. We get ready to do a tax sale and we tell customers that. But once it does, it push, I don't know, people turn, but once we produce the tax sale, once it goes to them, all back taxes are due, we can't do a partial.
So when the charter resolution goes, it would stop the people that are playing the game of what we're doing today is not. Right. And that's what you gotta stop because that breaks those numbers a lot better than it should be because you got some bigger taxes. But know that it's a lot cheaper when the county could have counted that little bit of interest and just keep going. So that's to me.
So that's a referral conversation.
Right. That's why I think you fix that part of the charter reservation and then you go the other way and take care of the deadlines as I go. I mean, that's just what, and talking to them, it made sense. And the more I looked at it, started looking at, putting on paper, I looked back and said, what we talked about cashiers is how do we do with the current year? Because the current year affects other, if the money doesn't come in, the council doesn't get the, it's all, it's all, it's all, it's all. So we need to figure out how to get the current year in. And that's gonna make them feel, especially somebody that's dealing with two years, they're paying for three, for three-year old one, parent two years over. They're gonna pay all of them now. And, you know, right now they don't worry about tax on because they paid it before the tax on. That would have made all that at the same time.
If they pay the current year, they pay the current year first, but they got the liquid. Can they then apply or do they have to go over?
If, if they have, the way that they do this is they pay the current year. And then they start paying on that as well. If you're a three-year tax, whatever that is, if you're always at the current year, they can always be one year long or they're always at the, it'll be the tax on. Because that figures your taxes. Because they'll never bother to check what they do is they come in like twenty-two taxes, they'll pay twenty taxes. So they're paying four months for two. This way they don't pay twenty-two, but the twenty that puts them up and the tax on. So they'd have to pay twenty-two and forty. Right. And then all of them, they have to pay twenty-one, all of a sudden come up. And when the charter resolution means that was that big current year first. So that keeps your taxes, you know, getting paid on top of them. It doesn't without having to have the expensive out of tax. We got that tax up along with the, and that a lot, but this gets you caught up and it made a lot of sense when I talk about.
Well, I swear my goal would be that I could do.
Yeah, what?
Wouldn't happen out of that.
I would love that too. I think I've got a resolution to go start from the job. And there's a lot of those combinations.
Or just get to where it's pretty minimal. If, I mean, you put in policy that assists in that.
So that is a, uh, however you want to see the resolution, but that is what we're, we're trying to do as well.
Right. I would give a little, I already have it set up something. And have it come out, make sure it's a time that Josh will be here too.
Yeah, I would say that's gonna take a year. We probably need to get going.
Yeah, she's already sent me, she sent me what their file is that they need and a lot of it was out of our system already. It's just that seeing these numbers and a hundred and twenty-five of them and then going back to ninety-four makes me worried that some of our data in our whole system may not have.
Cause we don't want to include someone who actually is not going, that just had a missed payment applied.
Correct.
Can you check on the fourteenth and the fifth, fourteenth of this month?
And the fifth, or month. And final tax distribution for two thousand and twenty-two is in progress and will be completed is today. Um, we are still waiting on a state to assist them set up the driver's license equipment and training availability. Um, our staff is cross-training to serve both tax and motor vehicle customers, um, which is going really well. People, um, are still confused when they come upstairs that we moved the office door. Um, but, uh, they like that they are able to address their taxes and have a legal understanding of mine, which I'm not, to get back in another range rate, so. Um, I'm still working with the auditor to make the two thousand and twenty-one audit, um, to date everything. And he and his staff have requested to be provided. He's also said that, um, now he is going to hold off on the February eighteenth audit until the two thousand and twenty-one audit is done. And whatever timeline he has for that. Um, I've been working on preliminary fund reconciliations in preparation for year end. Um, sheriff had some funds. I was in the, the treasurer's funds. Um, and we've made some adjustments to the accounting system. Um, we've identified some things from two thousand and twenty-one that I reached out to the auditor on how to proceed with them. Um, so we're waiting to hear back on that. And I've also had some adjustments that I communicated with John and Melinda, um, and some questions. So I, I don't know what the year process looks like, but I just wanted to get a start on that one, like, uh, and Chris and Missy can kind of help start that reminder, right? But, um, I know we're working on charter accounts to start in twenty twenty-three, so I hope that, um, that will also help in when we're receiving in money or when expenses are happening, that we're all, you know, uh, working on the same charter accounts and it helps with better reporting. Um, all my team is using Time Bar Plus, um, and it geared for the paytime off balances for staff for current and which is great because I have people that are kind of on borderline and put their middle balances are. And so I can get that in the system and approve or not approve their paytime off. Um.
Okay. Thank you. What was your thoughts?
Um, I really don't know a lot. Uh, I have receipts, um, that I've made deposits on and I started to do them twice a week instead of monthly just so I don't hang on that people's, they need a little check for some long.
Please, please.
Um, and so here's a copy of the deposits since August that I made. And also here's the United States Department of Commerce, uh, survey that I did, and that's just on residents only. Um, I have to do that, take that every month. Just shows you up the new residents only. Now that does not include, um, additions to a home like a deck or whatever. I have several microwave to be added on. She's several cell phone towers and yes, they have to have a leak permit for that. So that doesn't include those either.
So these are all good, nice stories.
That's everything. That includes land splits. Everything. And what, what is it? The census bureau one does not include warm exempt, land splits, additions. It only includes new residents only. And those are yours to me. I just wanted to see that I actually do. Um, and there's, uh, four C U Ps out there right now, but I've not returned. I've none have been returned to me with the money. So I currently don't have any cases for C U Ps. Um, there are four out there. That's for a second.
Yeah, I'll probably just come upstairs. There's a property who is possibly not vital by a conditional use permit. Do we have a process for looking at?
Do you recommend a, a, a?
Where is it referred after?
I'm sorry, what?
Where is it referred after that?
Uh, if they, first of all, not, I look at like, not everybody's malicious. I will make contact with them first to see if we can resolve it that way. Some things people just don't know they need. Um, and then after that, I send a letter referring them to them and then I.
Those people are already been talked to and just.
I know, I just didn't know what engage is. Some counties, uh, county codes court, but you guys know the.
That, I'm not gonna lie, this would be my first incident, but that, um, but I do know that I will send a letter and then also get a check on it. Is the next step after.
Jeff, Chris. First of all, Jeff, I'm very apologize. That is, Jeff coming to the courthouse, how many months ago now? That's where, so in February and a mad death rush that, uh, we didn't have any custodians. He came out without any, you know, any kind of schedule or anything. It was just, here it is now. Here are all, all these months later. So hopefully we did something to show what the, what the, all, all the partners like is dislike. So that was our fault. We're not gonna handle it or, or, it's all, no apologies.
Uh, so we completed the carpet and the jury box, uh, Mr. Court. Um, still have the judge's chambers and all that to do. The court slows down. Um, the windstorm blew down some fence at the jail. So we got it, but I had an affair. Uh, we replaced these all the Asia at the senior center on a couple of very, uh, over thirty-five. Was in this prepared. And we completed the painting of the jury brain and fixed that water damage on that board. That's it.
Thank you. More of us.
Well, we have the album.
And I'll ring.
No, my tricks all came out today.
Yeah.
Um.
I work faster, right?
Yeah.
Um, Linda had me coming in, um, right now, who's just like, come to see feeds and everything coming in. Um, my computer did. But today, well, would you have computers on over? Sunny said if I called Sunny, he's the, what he can do for me in the, well, fourteen. Um, other than that, I'm.
There.
Um, I just have a few things. I wanted to just reiterate that we had a certification fee for the vaccine type survey. Um, it'll take a couple of weeks for that, um, certificate to be completed. You have to also prepare your surveys first. Um, and then we'll make that certificate and we'll submit it back through all of it to you guys. Um, I did my regional, um, emergency preparedness grant meeting last week and that went pretty well. We talked about kind of how we're gonna change some things and we'll do two in the first time for a year and the rest will be, uh, through Zoom so that we still have anything to help out in our health department, health and safety type. Um, I am working on applying for a community safety mini grant through, um, K D H and the kids campus. Um, I haven't completed it yet, but I will, uh, complete it and have it submitted by Friday. So I'll know sometime after that, um, if we got a report or not. And then I'm kind of looking into some other grants through K D H, uh, that are mini grants. I requested access to a website called OD Map. And OD Map shows us real time. Uh, we get real time access to overdoses in the counties. Um, so we can feed in like women have a hot spot for overdoses, if, um, is they sitting in a hot spot, things like that. And there are mini grants available from K D H that I've applied for to help contribute to getting that taken care of and lessening those overdoses. Um, and then we are starting to wrap up the vaccine season. We are out of high dose vaccines and within the next month, we will be out of regular dose vaccines. So, yes, for the, and this means even we can't reorder. Um, so once they're gone, they're gone, we'll start referring to, you know, pharmacies, your doctors, all that thing like that. And then we are, now that we are starting to kind of wind down with the flu vaccines, we're starting to assess how many vaccines we gave this year and see do we need to order more for next year or do we need to get it off the table now? And, um, we had several, several schools and, um, other places in the community had asked for a clinic to do, if we could help drive through the clinic, or like we can here to the courthouse or the clinic. Um, I know one of the school nurses reached out asking if we could do a clinic for their staff. Um, so that's something that we're also gonna look at for next year and see kind of where the pros and cons, would it really be beneficial? Or do they just need to keep doing what they've done in the past? And that's.
All right, thank you. Henry Carter.
Our call back is Wednesday for the second. And. Been working on the K I O F budget for twenty twenty-four.
Sheriff Chris Wells. I know you got stuff coming, so.
Yeah, I got a lot to say. So wait, not four, I'm just. Several different reasons. Uh, we need to A E D in all of the written now, so we're, well, without, you know. We should have the A E D on every control.
Oh, the A E D. Okay, I didn't, I didn't understand what you're saying.
Well, we appreciate that. That's what helps us. That's all I have.
Thank you. Jared McFerber.
Uh, this is your shirt by E M B G Grant, very important. I got confirmation and it's been received. Wait, see how much we can get on that. Over on the train or counting.
Stephanie Burden.
Welcome. First week of my reduced hours, um, had no issues. I didn't have people call me on my cell phone and I lived up, uh, contacted people via email, so there were no glitches or I had no problem communication. Um, I just turned in our E F A bills for, uh, through the whole month of October. I'm going to save this a thousand dollars because I have a check. Um, so that we don't have to pay that full trip. Um, and then, um, I'm working with Rhonda. I wanted to remind everybody, Wednesday is our soup off. And be sure to bring your suits to me in the morning so I can identify who you are. So when we have prizes, so when the Fridays are awarding, you get your prize. And then at noon, everybody can come in and eat soup. So Rhonda and I are working on that. So we're excited about that.
So in case somebody doesn't know, what are the hours that you're in for us?
My hours, I work Monday, Tuesday, eight to four, no lunch. And then on Wednesday, I work, uh, eight till two. And then my number is posted on my door and hours are posted and right to the. And I just turn the department and my personal open.
Are you done talking now? Or you got more stuff?
I have more stuff. You and me have.
Yeah, I'm on the call. That's all you have. It is on the office for the big day.
My bad. Here's my normal, but I won't go, don't, don't, don't make the changes overall, but, uh, I will do some highlights. So we are at, uh, twenty-two applications for the neighborhood revitalization program and tax payment. So that's great. That's twenty-two. And are those accepted like any of the criteria?
They, they all meet the criteria. They can't be officially accepted until they're done. Um, because we don't know that they, you know, until they're done building, if, if, you don't know that they're, but they're accepted until as of now for, for where they're submitted. Um, the down payment assistance program, uh, that's the state program that all, that the county give a resolution for. Um, I do have every city house I get. So we are statewide for that program. So they can get, um, a grant for the people that fall back get a grant for their, uh, closing possible down payment. Um, so I did complete the M I H grant for Cartindale. We haven't heard anything yet. I'm sure it's gonna take a long time for those to come through. And I also have a similar.
And I also have a similar meeting with Lyndon on Monday at seven, their city meeting, and I'm gonna explain to them, um, the M I H program and R A J D to see if it's something, they, they, they're pretty interested in doing something similar to a apartment out there. Um, I did get to present, um, and a speech on the benefits of broadband and, and fiber internet needed in O S H County. Um, so there is some grant money that we should be hopefully getting. And then also they've started already, well, fiber internet in O S H City and, um, we're really getting, hopefully will have it in the whole county for the next few years. I can't tell you what costs, uh, of it right now, but with the great help, it sure, with the grants, it sure is helping. So it will help. And if we can get additional grants after that for, to continue on, it'll be great, but it is still coming. Um, so we did, there was a ribbon cutting, we helped for, uh, a, a new realtor. Well, it's a, not, their location is new in O S H City, so we have a new realtor in downtown O S H City, Kirk and Cobb. They moved into the old Gibson pharmacy right next to the hardware store. Um, I am working with a couple of local libraries, um, and we're gonna, I'm gonna help teach and offer some classes on some basic computer skills and also resume writing to kind of help, um, some of our, uh, community, uh, learn some basic skills. So when they go to apply for jobs, they can have those and then also.
Training.
Helps them, yeah, and then also help them achieve maybe some higher jobs, make better resumes. Um, and then the other big one is, um, O S H City is losing a couple of daycare. So I am working with, uh, a group of, um, leaders there and we are forming a, a, a committee to kind of discuss maybe possibly forming a community daycare center. Um, so, so early they did something similar with their E F A school. Um, many moons ago, before I even had children, I was on a ward, I walked in, they have a very large community, so I. So my next, the last thing I have for you, and this is just, this is just my ratio, this is not the final. Um, this is the website, the new design. So this picture will actually be a rotating banner of different photos that I approved that the community has sent in. And then it'll actually say to the community member who took it right here, so give credit to, um, so say Heather submitted in a photo, a beautiful sunset or something, or anything, or, or it could be a community thing. I've had, oh, well, I've been so impressed with, um, the response that I've gotten from the community members that, and we'll continue it, it'll rotate through and change it out. So that'll be featured in, giving the community, our taxpayers some, some, uh, praise on our website. Um, so they have digits in minutes, it'll be right here. Uh, we can add something. I know we don't, uh, I, I, one thing I do wanna add down here is the link to like YouTube and stuff. They, they didn't hold that, I'll look at that on here. Uh, employment, this is the notifying, so it, and they'll be able to sign up for different things. So maybe they wanna be notified every time we post minutes, it'll notify them, or maybe they wanna be on my notification list or phrase or share. So anyone who has had something, uh, they can sign up for notifying, report concern, um, could be Thursday, I'm from you, could be a broken turn, they see a pothole. Um, just giving them an opportunity to maybe report their concern here and not.
Who are they?
Uh, it will probably be, um.
So you can, you can address it to them.
Right, yeah, I'm gonna get it, it'll probably be, or, uh, maybe it's something she can sign up, they can put it's a road bridge issue, but when it's basic stuff, I'll probably just filter through and um, see what, what needs to happen. Uh, and then of course, the economic development, news and announcements. So we'll put like, um, anything going on, like just a thing going on, or like she talked about drugs in her condition, or she's got, um, she'll be someone for her T shots. We, that there can do all the news. And then you've got, we've got a role department like normal. Like it's not so early. So you have your general, you have your elected attorney, commissioner. So everything's about the same. So whatever you had before, it's about the same verbiage. It's different before, probably. So, okay, when I looked at it before, everything was the same except the layout was a little bit. This is just the trial thing, so maybe. Stuff works, we don't care. Um, so not final, this is, so it's very similar layout, similar verbiage is what they have before, is what we have before. So we want to, um, change, so this is what we should, not the style, we want to change the style of, it's a verb we do wanna change. Or persons from, you know, laying down a treasure, paying, or on the line, but we'll work with the department on how they wanna lay that out. So that's, and then we have the link to our social media account, so if they wanna, like it's on, like the Facebook page, our Twitter. And then you can also do a search, which is nice. So if you wanna just type up here trash, you can, and it'll pull up. So anyway, that's kind of, um, where it's at now. Not that, that's the layout is done.
I do, I got, this is a subject, actually, though, it has to be a subject. I got received some complaints about the game, but I never heard.
Do you know cashy?
So following your, no pickleball.
Oh, pickleball, okay.
So I've had several people ask me if there was any way the county can help get every community set up with a pickleball courts. I started out in terms of lots of houses.
So.
What is pickleball? Sorry to go. It's even, here's one, one person, it's even for old people, I'm gonna show you.
Yes. So there are helping communities, uh, for instance, I, um, for a legate has talked, has talked about switching out the tennis courts, there's some courts. I, I think it's definitely a community discussion versus capitalizing, because of the financial thing I hear. If, uh, I can definitely help them with the grants, stuff like that, um, Jones Parks Grant due December fifteenth for this round. They're one that often gives out that style of, the grants for, if I think that's hard. So I'm absolutely willing to help them out with that, having the county have the money to give them, probably not. So that would get you, that would be one of the. Just similar to a tennis court, it's smaller, just, I have one little thing I'm gonna help run right.
Yeah.
But yeah, I'm gonna help with, um, some dis-solve, cause that's what I'm a lot over in this area, finding creative money, helping them, uh, with things to get money from other, from people and donations. But I mean, do I have, I don't, you know, I don't have money to get, so if they want help as far as, you know, brand, fundraiser, stuff like that, I'm, I'm there, always, I always say yes to that.
I have something in Pico, there was a pickleball, pickleball school that's right next to our, where I live. They just took a tennis court, they just marked it, there is a tennis court, but they also marked it.
I can tell you all about it.
Yeah, Josh, you gotta.
No, uh, hopefully we are up and running as far as you all know how to contact me. If not, um, I can ask someone, most people have been contacting me, I can give you all my contact information. This is Jonathan Kerlich, our associate attorney, you may see him down here as well. But, uh, I think I've learned most of what you guys are doing, and these are helpful.
I was just briefly gonna state, and I think at the last department meeting, I mentioned it, as we were talking about the audit efficiency work and all policies. And your recommendation was that you work on kind of a comprehensive plan.
Yeah.
And so I just.
Financial policy.
Yeah, like the financial, like a county-wide financial operation manual, we don't have anything regarding that. And so instead of doing it kind of one policy at a time, and, and I don't really know a timeline, I know it's just, we started that conversation. So I didn't know, because briefly wanted to just state something about that, what we're talked on, how that will kind of progress.
Yeah, I think it's mainly for bids and, and, I mean, it'll include internal, uh, policies as well and best practices, but the main thing is, is for bids, at what levels. You guys will all have to seek, uh, see a bill, bid versus thresholds for informal bids of type deal. So we can go over that. You, that may exist, and if it does exist, you wanna get in contact with me to maybe incorporate that. We just wanted to try to standardize that across, uh, the departments, um, and then other, other financial policies. Can include anything, I guess, that, I, I know that there have been proposals as far as, sort of, self-love reimbursement or other types of, um, or voucher type issues, uh, that, that have been proposed peacefully. That this is a good time to kind of receive some of those, uh, suggestions if you'd like to incorporate. But we are, other counties, um, as examples, try to bring everybody under one roof. Obviously elected and appointed, you know, there may be some, some different needs of each, each, uh, department. And it's really just trying to protect the county, uh, from an audit standpoint, to make sure we have standard operating procedures.
Thank you. All right.
Are busy with the election and advanced voting and, um.
I did have a couple.
Chelsea Worsky, same as.
Yeah, I'm being back. I don't have much, uh, we were able to have our first, um, post-COVID jury trial, that happened, um, was very successful by us. We didn't have any issues, we had no concerns, nothing like that, we came up. Um, we're back for it in the courtroom, we were one of the only counties that was fortunate enough that even during COVID, our partners say, no, we're gonna do it. So there's, so that's much to change. Um, Jeff and Barbara, well, on their way to the courtroom completely done. Purpose jury box the other day, and I think the next one, so we're gonna work on the front first, and we got a lot of problems on that. We have a synergy meeting in there.
All right, thank you. Mister Speaker himself, who likes to talk so much, seems to be, you know, Mr. Far, how are you doing?
I'm fine.
I know you just wanted.
We just went through the three bridge lettings, uh, got some prices on that. Like we had some pretty good contractors, we got a lot better price by doing three at a time. The numbers were quite a bit lower than single bridges. So that helped us out a lot. I got, uh, two more, one, there's the K Doc selective bridge that we've been waiting to roll through. That one's down, um, we have on the dam, and then I have another one that dates in Franklin County, the wooden bridge that's, um, in desert fair. So we got that one, I got the plant two rather long, it's down too. And working on moving the utility lines and everything on the three that we did today. So I'm kind of here to hold up a little fire to get that, you know, we got two more loads of salt we'll bring in than we have for us all. For the first part of the year, so hopefully we don't need it, we can be good with that. If anybody likes the smell, I definitely don't. That it?
You have a paper?
No, not really.
I just got a couple of things. Um, we attended the K A C conference a week ago. Anyway, when I was going through the vendor, um, booths, I did run into Debbie Trehan, who was, was C I C that did some of our training. So we were just visiting about the, we've got three projects that we're working on, and I was just gonna get a little bit of an update, maybe from Rhonda or Stephanie. It's the time clock plus mobile app, and then the employee portal was really close. I think you just.
They're supposed to do training, I don't know if they love the first week in November, but maybe they've taken pity on me and realized that needs to be.
I know, and she said she was down till middle, until the fifth of them. And then, and then there is, this is the training that we've implemented.
Okay, so hopefully the next couple of weeks then we'll get something scheduled for your training.
Yeah, I think she was, she was on on training, on the final that one.
Okay, and then she, Debbie also mentioned about the charter accounts, whatever, and the, whatever the process is, she, she's able to come back at some point, right? To assist in that or what?
I thought that we would, it would probably be like a help call that we put in, that they come on the system, wouldn't call that their.
Yeah, everybody.
Response, thank you.
Okay. Okay, and then did everyone, like Rhonda printed this thick one for me, but I, I do have a digital one, but.
I went out and I typed out each section, they had, like you had multiple sections, but they had bridge, they had sewer, they had, uh, inside. And I sent those P D S to each department.
Did you guys get those? Charge truck, did you all get them? Like for us, it was super easy. I just went through it. These are our three categories, and we only have a handful in each, so it's easy for us. But each of you will customize it for what you want in this department. So I didn't know. Well, that's kind of what I wanted, what I was kind of meaning to know is, as we're facilitating kind of the conversation, what's the timeline of when, if it gets implemented? When, when do these need to be back? That would be for you and, for you and Stephanie, what, when do you think this stuff needs to be back? What the department.
Oh, yeah, it's, it's a little bit of a month. It's a coffee that much. Yeah, the help all we believe will wait for that.
Maybe shoot for. And then we'll have time to get them organized and everything.
Did you get one? Okay, so. Okay, well, basically.
Right now, I, until the eighteenth of December, I, I mean.
So when you get it, it's, should be pieced out just for your department, but when you get in there, it's just gonna give you basically line items of all your expenses. And then you can choose which ones you're wanting that you actually have expenses for. And then it's, it'll be starting in January, but that gives each department, they can specialize.
I do have one thing I want to say, um, as far as Jeff and Bob go, um, anytime I call, ask for opinion or they ever jumped on in and liked the, we call that a connection book. Yeah, I mean, they just kind of, they explained to me, it's no problem, so I'm really, really, really appreciative of that.
All right. So Christine Tanner, Sheriff Falls, all you three need to stay for a bit, it's just about. First, we need a second session, Bruce.
Thank you. I forgot to call you. This one is on the back. I don't know that.
Oh, there's you guys, so you're gonna be. Yes. Do you guys stop?
No, I'm here.
Eleven thirty, we'll bring a best room, a lot of others for the town. Without a great promotion, we'll open up the Kansas for the public.
Rhonda takes notes for me, so I wanna make sure that she. So now you're doing notes for, for eleven, twenty-five, eleven thirty, before recessing.
All right, so just wanted to take you up to you, you guys have nothing, uh, pretty rapidly right now. Squareway for the specialty. City.
That's right, you especially.
Right, yes, it is actually at the city area. Right, so we'll get that squared away, uh, we got these swift, we should, right, so we got that employee. People wrapping up. I just got some plans for that, those controlled, top of the map and swift plan for all that. Scheduled, uh, for the control here just last week about what that looks like, we wrapped that in, what a little new package out, start that grading.
Yeah, originally we were talking about, I think we'll get that, or maybe later in November, early December. I think what we're going to do for this sixty day duration, we want to start the project right around early March. I think we're gonna wait until like, just after the first year, start that estimation package and it's proceedings going into the rest of the project. And the third, we don't care that much about the whole. So I think we were going to, uh, keep that going, um, first of January, the estimation back. And we do have that, we do have that package, and when we put that out for bid here, probably this week. And we do have that, we do have that package, and when we put that out for bid here, probably this week. Probably not yet, this week, we'll get it out this week, it's probably in about three weeks to take a look at. You guys have a lot of things that's right procedures. A bit unfortunate, this.
I missed, I missed some of it, like, sorry.
So yeah, what we're looking to do is get us a really package to start the grading for, out there on the side. Careful, any rock, any dirt, it needs to happen. I think it'll jump sort of the project, so we'll get the whole thing, we'll get the ground running in March, it's a good. And that's another question, so originally we talked October, obviously decided until December. With this, a bunch of different things will deliver December. You know, the picture you guys have scheduled, like I said before, make it probably, if you think you guys will find work with that. I think we got a job test on, in the April twos, is what we do.
Yes, we do, so we do, I'm wondering about.
Yeah, it'll be like right at lunchtime, so it'll be noon.
Yeah.
Basically, you know, look at the face, that way, you're like, there's a lot of people that kind of, I just. Yeah. This will be rejected chamber.
So would you like to do it before?
If that, I mentioned, how more do you get to that?
So we got the twenty-first, four, the twenty.
How much do you all see happening on the site?
Well.
For the ground bird?
Yeah.
It's a bit closer to when you start doing the grading?
It's ideal to buy the huge gap, the twenty-two of them.
Right around the birth of the.
So we're going to do like the summer of the show. Also, I guess, right.
Better take two days in my room.
So do the twelve.
Bring it up rather.
Yeah.
Or the twenty-seventh of December would be.
Yeah, I might have luck, people, travel wise.
Yeah.
I would say do it.
I'd say the fifth or the twelfth.
Fifth and the twelfth, it'll be two better days.
Uh, happy to Danny Rouch at two thirty today, and kind of a recent flash from the past, I think I've worked with Danny at international book. I'm thinking about it right now, so it'll be interesting to meet him. Then we'll kind of go through the permitting process and just update him on the survey package and the information.
That's on the survey on the mark.
Yes, correct. Welcome, ladies, welcome to tell my meeting at his office today, two thirty, like I said, it's mostly understanding building permit process and make control and same thing. Right.
Right, I'm just meeting.
Okay.
Yeah. Get a chance to make those, these guys were.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it, thank you.
I was making sure you're adjourned.
Second. Hi.
All those in person. Oh, the commissioner is adjourned. We are back from recess, and you're very, very commiserated, so Chris, you still have. I know you're going to do the exact.
Finally called Jeff.
Listen to that. You have Tommy?
He's all, this will be, oh yeah, so he's trying.
I would make a question, approve the hire of Tommy Taylor Rouch from jail, over at seven thirty hour. Thank you, eleven seventy-two.
Second.
Are you, uh, all those in person?
Hi.
Are you putting all of them on, go back, just at the job?
I was trying.
You're good.
I'm sorry.
I sent this email, we get it.
Yeah, I checked that out.
I did?
Yeah. Stephanie has, we might give that stuff.
Have been, yes, I've been reading it.
I think she's bringing.
I already have that.
And you've read it.
I'm reading, I'm reading, yeah.
Yeah, I talked to.
We don't need to worry about.
I hope we'll have it all set up.
Um, also, I talked to Josh, but I want to talk to Kevin as well. We should wait until the status from the commissary contract. Trying to revoke that, I think, the same way under the space, Burbank.
Yeah.
Yeah, Burbank.
Oh, I was going to ask you about that, what the process is, because that was ending, right?
It is.
And then what's the main process?
Uh, we're trying to go over that website, so that's something to sign the website, we're calling. You can talk more about it. A lot less for us to drag up, so we don't drag up this. Burn, yeah, burn for it.
A bird or a worm? A worm.
You want to say.
The worm, the worm.
Uh, I was just going to say, we get the dispatchers, the CyberCon, or anytime the birds seem to fly off, are basically inundated with calls. Right. They'll literally.
They call number one to ask about.
No, no, I was ready. Oh, there's only two questions, and they're literally. Never touch them. They will. And then they call back when they're done, too. So the new, the new process, we set up a website with this, we're going to start happening. Basically, you fill out a survey, and then you click on the back, we're going to burn that, and it'll show dispatch where the. So it's, I think it'd be a lot easier than having people call in, something older, you know, people run up, it may take a whole, getting used to. You can do it on your cell phone, you can go out to where you're going to burn that, and then we'll pinpoint it by, if you get some result, and then we'll serve that. So.
So that's going to be an education.
Yeah.
So.
Hopefully, the police. Last call, like, they'll leave. Website, so I should help. And.
Are you talking?
Permit, they'll just, oh, that's awesome. They'll, the permits has, they have websites, so they'll read that.
You agree with them?
Yeah, that is.
So there's still.
I agree, yeah, put that on there.
The rules are still there.
There's still, there's still a requirement of the citizens, if they're going to burn, they have to notify the county. It's just, it's going to be a process that, through the website or whatever, that's going to.
And the Burbank's, we posted it.
And they'll be posted, and the website will allow that. You try to get that website, and they're going to say, we're going to.
So I know what the topic is, and I'm pleased to have heard about this topic. And how it is.
I got a couple more topics. Let me save the last one, that you're going to want to. We also had a, both a, a local agreement with, they have on their towers, for any service. The, the, the general. Uh, since this is in the. Order as well.
The turn, no.
Well, they have to prove.
I thought they were all the same.
No, this is stuff I've been working on for a long time. They gave, I think they gave this solution, and it, but. Supposed to be working on that, too. Or wait for the response.
Does the solution come with extra dollar signs?
No, but, uh.
Yeah.
Those one gives up.
Fifteen hundred dollars.
Yeah.
So, Tower SBA.
Who owns it?
SBA Steel. Which is, is a big tower company, that's several towers. Probably several hundred towers.
So in most of these agreements, we have, we can put antennas on, with Judge, on, across the boundary of that.
Yeah.
This is where, this is where Burbage gets so crazy. So.
I think it's like the.
The tower emergence, to services, given an antenna cycle, it's on, it's one of those. Upon a selection of certain time, why are we done, we're going to have both?
Especially in China, it's a transfer, and so it has to have both.
Anyway, now they're decided, they want us to pay fifteen hundred dollars a month.
Yes. Yes, that's their discounted price, they want it.
So. You know, I was saying, that message asking if there was a second tower, because we had approved a permit, because those two companies came here, at the same location. And there was a company that wanted to build it, because they wanted to put something on that tower, and that, and that company wouldn't allow them, or they already charged me, so we're going to fee. So they said, fine, we'll build our tower, but then you, they didn't do.
But that was going to be our solution, it's just, okay, we'll go get the profit, and we need something to get that down. So then, facility to help with.
That's why I'm, yeah, there's a question, because the wire is, it's not even happening.
I agree.
What's, what's a good, have a point?
This amendment is a special useful, that's a, again, we didn't want to.
And can we?
If they don't want to, pick the target.
That's, my question to you is, how would we argue that?
Is this the.
Yeah, well, it shows us amendment, so.
Yeah.
I think.
So, so they have a special use permit for that tower? And we need, then we need to look at the special.
Our, yeah, it's.
That's what we need to do.
I figured it would go with this.
Right.
So we just need Josh to figure out legally what we need to do.
This is their proposal, you know, respect. I have.
I didn't.
I also sent that to John.
So he's.
So John's out of all those.
He should have a, I know, but I don't know whether he works, but I guess.
So this is why, when people, when we sit and ask some questions about special use permits, this is exactly why. I mean, there's so much stuff that's put in the news, but they don't know what can happen.
Well, the antenna, antenna doesn't make this.
Yeah, I heard, I thought the.
They'll give us one, or, or anything, but not two. They require.
And how much space does it take?
Ten feet, well, and that's just that, if you put one antenna, you can't waste that space, anybody else, you're taking up that ten feet on tower. Or two antennas are going to be across each other at the same height, so it's going to be the same ten feet. It doesn't make sense, they can't rent that, they can't. They also asked us to just take the buildings on, or the book that's on, or anybody building, that one, we should call it.
Yeah, oh, they don't want you, they don't want you.
They want things taller. That email, I think it.
Right. That's on the.
They have a great.
They just need to know.
I guess, yeah, I got copied on that, so I kind of think, I feel like I saw that.
Wow, they were thirty-five hundred a month, so the discount, oh, we got.
Yeah, and Josh has been responding to a lot of people that don't send us stuff together, if we all have to.
Try to keep copies of everything.
Okay.
Right. I would think that we'll get to Austin, so. Special use and.
Hopefully, it'll be.
I think what it reads is you're a lot. You're kind of.
Do they have somebody else want to release that same ten foot space?
They can, I mean, they're.
Yeah.
We'll see what legal happens.
That's probably the easiest. Start looking around.
On my, we don't have time, man, we can bounce.
I don't know.
You look around, you know, it's not a lot of locations.
So. Oh, I, that's not, I thought you said that they're towers.
That's not a lot of towers in the area, there's a more, or.
I'm going to say, how, how many pulls of ice on that? That's, well, how tall is it now?
Where we're going to have our antenna, it's going to be under forty, we should have nine hundred, five hundred forty feet.
Okay, that's not a real.
Not a real, that, that tower is not real tall, and it's got, it's got.
Right, okay. And you're below that.
Yeah.
So a hundred forty.
Hundred thirty-five, I think, is what it is. See, they're hundred forty percent. They could, whatever, the ground, the water tower, it's like, it's like.
Yeah, okay.
That's our, that's what I'm going to do, how.
If this isn't resolved, we'll go down another half.
Right.
Open this issue to resolve.
Somebody sent me a message today when they saw this was on the agenda, and they wanted to know something about, because the eight hundred series allowed people to text to nine eleven?
Yes, the radio system.
I don't.
You can text nine eleven.
Well, I would.
Well, that was the.
And we're not working, then you'd deny one, too. Send that.
Yeah.
I just got my.
That's the one I was going to notice.
Yeah.
There's a.
Yeah.
What do you mean?
I mean, so.
I know. My request for the executive session to discuss non-elective personnel or cabinets, can't do five.
Can't do five. That's.
Ten, one more time.
John, or, but I think that was Pat Walsh. I don't know, I was just saying more, but. I'll make a. Good, I'll make a, we're going to have an executive session on the former exceptions, so it can't say, we exact, we're subject to a non-elective personnel. Bad exception to discuss personnel, is related to non-elective personnel, protect the bodies, rights, and obviously, individuals involved, prepared. Ten minutes will say it to eleven fifty-two, with Christine Foster and Stephanie Rubek, where that's also.
Okay.
All those in person.
Hi.
All process.
He is that, yes, I will.
Okay, this is why you should not like them, because I can pay now.
I'm. 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 Okay.
One minute. Time.
Some percent. And I just.
Okay, no action taken from the executive session? Longer? Oh, we see, I do.
Bye. Is that the last thing?
That is, well, other than what we'll make the statement about, I won't be here, but you guys will, but. We'll be together Wednesday, at what time have you done this?
Wednesday, eleven.
Wednesday, November second, and eleven thirty, but there will be no binding acts taken, other than the Dutch and Suits and Chilis. So if somebody has some really red hot chili, calvineros, and everything else, put it in there and tell them it's nice and hot, so have a try.
Yeah.
That's.
I know.
Yeah.
I put it in chicken meters and stuff. You leave us?
I just found the information I was seeing, getting your asking about. Yeah, it's all I got.
This is one, yeah, I can't remember.
No, I have not done anything on it, but I think I know what you're talking about. Is that the one? That's all the information and all the actions that have been taken. That were.
It's a little small, but.
No, it's the back one, not the, not on.
Not the house. On the place of the check thing, so maybe when they're called and then on their.
There's some.
They use a seasonal thing. I know they were here one day last week, unless they've already got them, and.
Oh, there's this one, that convention, hold on.
Well, there should be another. It's the labor distribution. Well, that one, look, big enough. Okay, yeah. And then Jake, do you want me to stand the checks that you've been approving?
Actually, no.
I believe that.
Does he find that?
Oh, no. There's no money in this, and he's donating. There's no money in this.
There's more.
In the diversion factors, there's no. The budget is completely way.
But. There is no budget.
It's not, it's not that, that long.
The true overhead on ours, there is no budget, there's no budget.
Well. I can't.
But that's because they have. But there's no budget. They're gonna do whatever they want. What would you do?
She, right there, again, I just want.
Yeah, there's a number on that, they use it, but there is no stuff where you're telling them this is about.
Hmm, I talked before, that stuff, that's made by.
I don't think it's probably a lot, but it's like, that's a town.
Well, sometime.
Hey, you know something, Pat talked about, they're talking about this, go green. We got the lights, and they're going to.
Well, I forwarded.
I have.
I have.
I have one brand light bulb.
I forwarded it to you and Chris, because I was wondering what your thoughts were, but I was wondering if he, both of you, where it has thought the lights would be best to be.
Is there's. I don't know what kind of bulb this one out here takes, I've never.
Which one?
That, does that take, that one take a special bulb, wouldn't it? Oh. Or does that just have like a low.
That's a low, you just, yeah, you, you put.
I wonder.
You can put LED or fluorescent either one of them there. I don't.
And we just say, have this for, for eleven, as one people.
I think it's for like the week, um, I'd have to go back and look at the email, but I think it was for a week, but I just didn't know if here, if there was a place here, or maybe a place also at the sheriff's office, if they.
I, I have more ready to ask Chris or Jeff.
I'll send it over. On the computer.
The words are over there, and this is not a matter, this is one second, but they should be filmed. So this. All twenty-six, first, most, second, those are covered, and it's all. So it's weird.
Can you have it in here? Can I borrow that? One we're looking at? Thank you.
So.
This one? The health insurance? You want, do you wanna know that's the health insurance?
Yes.
Yes, okay, all right, any other questions to you while she's down here?
That was, that was, where does it show the, or, or, is it just come off of us? That's how much we're actually paying them, is that what you said?
That's the tax portion, yes.
So that goes.
That will.
I mean, that's what's in the model, in the exact. Actually, we just got payroll check, got payroll check on us.
How about yours?
Yeah.
I won't be on my, yeah.
Yeah.
Where is, Mr. Townes, this stuff?
So where does it show my insurance?
And then, and then all.
My health savings, sorry.
Right, you have the health savings, and you have that.
Not a parental, or not, not a parental?
It just adds up, and that would be total amount that comes out.
Well, because all this, this is so it's.
Right.
Yeah.
The county shares.
So.
On that one.
This, this isn't correct, and how long is it in it, right?
That's what the bill is.
It's not what I'm saying, I'm saying, as a employee, I'm supposed to pay a part of my insurance.
Okay.
So where does it show how much I pay?
Right here, one sixty-seven. Thirty-six.
But I, my, I own one, kids own that, so I'm supposed to pay how much? Three hundred?
No, currently, the county pays three hundred, then it goes down to two hundred, then it goes down to one hundred.
So the, I'm, so my leftover part is that.
Right, right.
So it had to go up.
By a hundred dollars, right, each time that goes, each time when the county pays goes down, here it's gonna go up.
So when we look at the number that's on the sheet, that's the total number. Just being paid to.
That is the county's portion of it.
Right. I'd have to sit there and look at the.
Because it's odd that all of them say, that's why I asked that question. But it's not odd, because if your family.
Well, the majority of them, like, is the seven whatever, because that's a single.
Because everybody are on the same page, right, so if it's anything different than that, then yeah.
Because if you're family or children, then you're doing the county's ninety-one, seventy-seven, twenty, and then who's single, and then seven, thirty-two, ninety-one.
Correct, because once that, that'll be down, because we don't have that.
It, it goes down to zero at the end, but it goes, it's three hundred, two hundred, one hundred, and zero.
We got a, we're three hundred now?
Right, three hundred now, then it goes, in December, first of January, it goes down to two hundred, and then June, it goes to a hundred, and then in December, twenty-three, we're done, zero.
Uh, yeah.
I don't know that you're sure, I got, I know it's.
Thank you, sorry, I forgot to. Almost got it, so.
And did you see my emails?
Yeah, I can, I can work on this when we have.
What did you guys do?
What?
Well, down, down, right, down here, we have.
Then, I think we need to have.
So.
Yeah, okay, or at least, well, if they wanna stick in, well, it's leaving down here, and I was just thinking, we carry it up the stairs.
Great, great, small. Okay, those bulbs in the.
Right.
They take a special kind of bulb, they said. So I don't have that.
Yeah.
Well, you might not have one, but, but you could get a bulb that's.
Angry.
Yeah. I don't know.
You don't know this one, I've got to wait.
Yeah.
All right.
And it is pretty close, all the data, I think it's pretty close.
Pretty close, yes.
Hey, look, the. Wow, I'm happy, I'm happy with that, that's right. It's.
So we can tell.
Was Judge long in there Wednesday?
All right, well, here on Wednesday, we didn't even know that.
Well, so, or sometimes, so.
You want a judge?
I was gonna have.
I'll ask, when he's done, he looks like he loves judging, he just went up and judged the contest on Friday. Okay, I'll ask him.
Okay.
Yeah.
He can't, I'll get. I'll get the.
Okay, well, okay, I'll send you a message, let you know, that's okay, they'll have to look at their copy.
Eleven thirty is what time.
Eleven thirty Wednesday.
Yeah, I should have taken fifteen twenty.
Okay, that's his favorite kind of judging.
All right.
Yeah.
I'm gonna miss it, I may get, I get there to eat.
Yeah.
Good job changing my form, but I just gotta change, so I heard this.
I think there's several people that are gonna bring some, that not to be judged, just to.
I know, generally regardless, because we.
But for sure, it's gonna be here Wednesday, too, I can always ask.
So you don't want them to pay for doing that.
Okay, I'll ask them, okay, I'll let you know.
Yeah. Uh. Yeah, because there's, there's.
I know, but I, I.
So, back in, so why are you doing this? Then I get surprised.
I'm pretty worried to do it.
Yeah, well.
I forgot to, like, put.
Not sure, I can see Heather have a piece of apple, chili, waffles, spider, rolls, or a gray sponge.
You're just trying to test my capacity, please.
I may be taking very small, I can't see.
Actually, I just want to test her. I'll move the commercial this hour and next, I'm going to press the first six.
Maybe they'll bring some Mountain Westers too or something.
You have an idea about this. They have a big feed coming up, they're eating this up. I won't, I won't participate.
Yeah, just, we're super tight on whether, but. I know, I'm just saying, we're eighty-three percent of the year, and our general rate is about six, and the overall is eighty-six.
Well, when you're January payroll, January one payroll keeps the budget.
There's not a lot of. Questions? No? I'll make the motion, we pay the bills in an amount of one eighty-three oh nineteen seventy-seven, and payroll in an amount of six oh two three seventy fifty-six.
Second.
As it goes out.
Hi.
The other permits that she brought down will launch about June, July, in the next couple of weeks.
Oh, but yeah, for American, also.
I don't think it's too bad.
Put on our discussion, charter resolution for taxes. I want to put on our discussion. Conditionally used permits, we've been down, that would even get persons on here. Probably I give, I'm not sure if you want.
On what?
And I'm gonna advise anybody.
Well, I think what we need to do is just, like on this one here, I'm gonna need you to give me a review because it's just.
And that one will, we can't do that. And Josh will give that kind of fourteen. So next week, we can do that in executive session, so I don't have to ever pick.
On that other one, I could just like to go, we've got file, we kind of bring what in there, just kind of discuss it together, and then we can decide what, how we want.
So put us down for thirty times.
Okay, so thirty minutes for the condition we use permit.
Is there any other?
The charter resolution.
Do you want to talk about that next week, or do you want to wait until Josh is here on fourteen? For the charter resolution?
Yeah, maybe I'll wait until.
Okay, but next week you can do the.
We can like start a conversation on that one.
I think we can start a conversation.
Then, then next week we can ask.
Okay, so do you want thirty minutes for both those together?
I would probably fifteen. And I would have fifteen to do that part.
The charter resolution.
The charter resolution. Just so we can say there's one.
Right.
Especially for every late in here.
And it's not.
And then the discussion, which means permits, I said one is here.
So, yes. I don't think that we're ready to tell late this month, but we'll have CP agreements for. CP agreements, because our block mortgage is on the. So I'll let you know. Sorry, you guys.
No.
You know, we have, we got, we have that entire. Oh, KAC guy, we got to a KAC conference. There's something that still bothers me after bringing this up with. At this Kansas, so says now we're doing the commissioners, maybe the other run off, so some more of this.
Can I get it here?
But I beat these people up as far as I can be up to. Those days down, he's doing the uncur, you know, the cell stats on the old work ground, they start down.
Right.
We get that, if somebody loads up the ground like all towards tall Kansas City, people aware of it, they collect taxes, they're accountable, it's absolutely nice. So. We've been talking to lobbyists that was up there a lot, that says you can, I mean, I would try to get that where you guys started, gave that that's way, but start correcting the calendar, one of the origin. Just the destination that's. Looking at the numbers, just to face it, as I think we might have, and what he charged, is probably to consider doing that, but I think we want to get some other counties involved, so we don't have all these threats.
So what happens with that information, like that gentleman that spoke after you and said like all the Amazon packages and everything that's delivered, so. We, if I understand right, he said we collect that, it's delivered here.
So here's what.
What about like building, like let's say somebody built a house, all the supplies get delivered, do we not get that tax? If your lumber is delivered, or shoe drops.
The law is correct, because. Didn't want to provide a part to. So they changed, the reason they changed the laws, they made them live, they got a tax order, this is the liberty. Now, I'm rolling materials, I don't have to do it there, I think. You know, that's when I, because it's not part of that bill. What's in there is what they did was for the big auction, and then they just do aggregate, and that is aggregate, I'm assuming that's what they did. Johnson County, Shawnee County, all those counties are collecting all around, and the word patent all, where is that? Think about this, how much, how many terms are there? Love farm is true. And that's all. How much damage has done that?
Yeah, I got.
And how many times have they got what's for water and what else on, and not one nickel came into account, I'm talking about one nickel period, because there was no road agreement, there was no money, which is why it's important, if you're right. And we're starting to figure out that, we're gonna have to start looking up a lot of these defeats, because that stuff in there. It's like this antenna, how much money is that gonna cost? That was then twenty years. But you gotta catch that stuff, I mean, unfortunately.
Well, and I think the branding of counties is good, but it is fairly. Isolated to the counties that actually have.
Absolutely.
So there's only a few counties that are interested in that, where the rest.
There's more than he does, because now without the other counties that turn this out, sand, salt, and those, but here's the thing, the, he, the guy that brings this up, we need to take, break this up. And take the aggregate or whatever, that's a little bit, so.
Right.
And if he does that, the way they're talking about that also, because I've talked to the states, the general, they're all, they're all agreeing with it. Our general agrees with it, so we can have some backing, we can, cameras, group of batteries, so they, so there was people out there who were back, but we had to get somebody to take them. So we have to spend a lot of the, the.
Well, they don't mind it because they're making a tax in a way.
Right, absolutely.
They're hoping that helps with the road agreement to where they. That's why they're.
Right.
Sure, but that's why you get the road area, so because that one actually counted in the whole account, just like on the other side, so it's in the account. I mean, I'm, there's so much money, that's why I keep telling them, there's more money than we've just watched leave our county, that nobody's cared about, that's what we could.
I think that we, I just think we've been kind of played devil's advocate, but trying to use against that.
Oh, sure.
And then, I don't know, it's, it's an interesting one.
I mean, that's something that we're just watching leave, and there's nothing, it would mean no increase in any of it. There would all be revenue coming to town. So we'll have that on the agenda nicely. Yeah.
In next week, fifteen minutes for the discussion on the. And charter resolution for taxes, thirty minutes discussion on social shoots permits, and Miss Yelena, we're called, get her picture to me and for her.
But we'll get the discussion ready, so we'll have something we can talk about. Anything else? You got anything else?
Could you decide on this, the groundbreaking? Because the groundbreaking decided on not a full amount.
Yeah, the earthquake December. That's a blow. Brain shock, so. I'm gonna have it back by some. Holy smokes.
Yeah.
Unless my wife gives her a reasonable.
Yeah, right.
I'm sure she did.
Okay, I moved the blue urn.
Oh, that's a fair, what you saying? What did you say?
Uh, nobody heard.
It was over, we're real quiet, this show is gonna get you more electricity.
Like they told you. I can tell you all about.
I still, that's very well.
We started playing in June, I had to drag from there, and we loved it.
I heard.
And now several of our friends, we all go play on the Thursday night, and to talk to play Sunday afternoon.
I'm having trouble making these turn offs.
Because weeks ago, I had a girls volleyball game, and we went to effort, the tournament, we went to pizza.